Good afternoon. My name is Greg Musiel and I am the Chair of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Welcome to our April 2020 Board Meeting, which is our first effort to utilize Zoom as a manner of presenting a meeting in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act and in this emergency situation with COVID-19. To start our meeting as we always do, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I recently looked up and realized that the U.S. Code says we should stand when we do the Pledge of Allegiance. I think we're going to suspend that today and you can all remain seated. But if you had joined me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I wanted to announce that we have a quorum. All seven trustees are on the Zoom meeting invite, along with other participants from the college. I think everybody should probably try to keep their systems muted. I will call on you individually as trustees as we go through the meeting for any discussion or questions. We will not have a roll call today or an announcement of visitors in the audience. We've also shortened the agenda, as we did last month, to remove some of the normal reports that seem less important now, given the other circumstances that are going on. Our four o'clock and first item to attend to is the Budget Workshop, which we start every April in anticipation of a Management Committee budget being adopted in May, with the official budget of the college being adopted in August after a full public hearing. I think Rachel Leers, our Chief Financial Officer, is going to make a presentation on the Budget Workshop. We will then move to questions for trustees, and I've tried to allot five minutes each trustee, followed by comments from each trustee, and I've tried to allot 10 minutes to each trustee. Nobody has to take all of their time, but the budget is important, especially in these uncertain times. So that's how we'll proceed, and I guess Rachel, if you could go with the contents of the budget book and your presentation, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Musiel. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. So for this afternoon's Budget Workshop, I'd like to start with the Budget Workbook, which is up on your screen. I believe all of the trustees additionally have a hard copy, as well as this information is currently available on the college's website. So we'll start with this. We'll go through several pages of the document here, and then at the conclusion of that time, I'd like to switch over to a few PowerPoint slides that I have put together to kind of summarize, and then we'll move into any questions and answers from there. So with that, wanted to spend just a moment going through the preliminary budget guidelines that were adopted by the Board of Trustees last December. Again, with the Board, we've reviewed these on a couple of occasions, most recently at our retreat in March and with the Management Committee just a couple of weeks ago, but for the sake of tonight's meeting, I wanted to touch on these again, as they do provide the framework that the administration has used in putting this budget document together. So one of the most important factors in building the college's annual budget is the estimated increase in assessed valuation for properties in Johnson County. So when we began the budget development process last fall, we began with an estimated increase in assessed valuation of 4.5%. In March, we were able to meet with some staff in the County Appraisers Office and got updated information on that and have since updated the budget guidelines to reflect a 5.25% increase in assessed valuation, and we'll talk about that a little bit more here in a few minutes. But again, a 4.5% factor was initially used in building the budget, as well as an assumption that the college's tax levy would remain flat at 9.121 mils moving into next year. As far as student enrollment and cost per credit hour, we built the budget to reflect a 1% reduction in credit hour enrollment and have established that our tuition cost per credit hour will not increase next year. The tuition rates for next year will remain flat for all residency statuses in next year's budget. As far as state aid, our budgeted state operating grant will remain flat with the amount that is planned to be received this year in FY1920, and that's about $23.6 million. Moving into our expense categories, salary and benefits are the largest component of our annual budget. We have built a budget around the assumption that our total number of positions will not change, it will not increase, and then we have included a factor of 3% for a salary increase for faculty and staff in our budget figures, and that is pursuant to the master agreement that's currently in place with the Faculty Association. College staff have developed the recommendations that build up our operating budget. We have staff in over 130 departments around our campus that have submitted budget requests based on their planning and program assessment needs, and they have provided justification for each line item in their requests. Budget also includes some significant capital allocations, specifically $6 million for planned renovations, the beginning, the first phase of planned renovations to our science lab, as well as continued funding for active learning classrooms, replacement of technology and equipment, classroom updates, and then just other replacement of furniture fixtures and equipment, as well as debt service, principal and interest obligations on our Series 2017 certificates of participation. You'll find that in the General Fund budget as well. So those were the preliminary budget guidelines. This next sheet is just the updated page. Again, I've updated and read the increase in assessed valuation to 5.25% for next year. This is just a quick look at our budget cycle calendar. It's very detailed and really don't need to spend any time, I don't think, going through all these individual activities, but just wanted to point out that this is really a year-round effort here at the college, beginning in September with staff conversations with the President's Cabinet, and culminating the following August with adoption of our legal budget pursuant to the statutory deadline of August 25th. From there, moving into our revenues for next year, on page 14 of the book, we have a 10-year look at the revenue sources. Again, this is in the General Fund of the college. Excuse me, I'm on, yeah, page 14, sorry. $108.4 million of ad valorem property tax revenue budget for next year, that's 66% of our total budget. The next largest source of funding for the college is our student tuition and fee revenue at $28.7 million. That's about 18% of the budget. Our state grant, as I mentioned earlier, about $23.6 million, 14% of the budget, and then we have a little bit of investment in other income to round out our total budget, which is anticipated to be about $164.3 million for next year. This next slide takes a longer-term look at our budgeted revenue sources. Again, this is the General Fund of the college. You can see in terms of total dollars, the growth from about $125 million to $165 million over this 10-year period. That's primarily the result of increases in property valuations in Johnson County through these years of recovery after the recession. That coupled with the fact that in FY14, the college's mil levy was increased by 3/4 of a mil, that really drove up the amount of property tax revenue that the college received year over year over this period of time. From there, with tuition and state aid remaining relatively flat in terms of dollars, then of course, as a percentage of the total budget, both of those have shrunk over this time. The next slide we have here is a more detailed look, and this actually dates back to 2000 at the changes in property valuations and the college's mil levy over that time. As you can see, the total property valuation has more than doubled in the county over this past 20 years, from about $5.4 billion in 2001 to $11.7 billion today. I would point out that in the middle section of the table, the top of the page, you'll see some red figures in those years between 2008 and 2013, those years during the recession, where assessed valuation declined. You can see the decreases there. That means that property tax revenues for the college decreased over that period of time. From 2014 to current, you'll see again the increases, 5%, 6%, and 7% annually in years, in those recent years. I talked about the mil levy action in 2014, that was a 3/4 mil increase. That was followed by a slight reduction, about a 10th of a mil reduction the following year, and then of course, in each of the last two years, the Board has voted to slightly reduce the mil levy, a quarter mil last year, and then about .15 mil this year in the current 2019-2020 budget year. Next, on page 17, we have an analysis, a historical analysis of what a total mil levy looks like for residents around the location of the college, College in Quavira in Overland Park. For the 2019 tax year, last year, they would have been looking at a total levy of about 120 mils. Of that, the college's portion is around 8%. As the chart illustrates, the college's portion of that total levy has remained at about 8% in each of the past 10 years. You can also see for informational purposes, the remaining components of that total tax levy for that residence, which would include levies from the state, the Olator School District in this case, City of Overland Park, and then the Johnson County and Library and Parks and Rec levies from there. So just a little bit of information, and again, kind of a historical look at the percentage of the college's mil to what you might see in total on your tax bill. In terms of dollars, this next slide calculates what the taxes would be. Again, this is looking at an average residence, so we get that $332,000 average of previous value from the evaluation report that's published by the County Appraisers Office. Based on our residential assessment rate, then we then arrive at assessed value to apply another levy to and calculate about $348 in total taxes that would be paid by this homeowner to the college for the year. That's about a $15 increase over the previous year. And again, this contemplates no action in the college's tax levy. This would be, that increased tax amount would be solely due to the increase in the Next, we have a look at our total ad valorem property tax revenues in all of our funds. So for purposes of the Budget Workshop and a lot of our budget conversations with the Board, we talk a lot about the General Fund, which is the primary operating fund of the college. But this is the reminder, we do have property taxes that go into our Special Assessment Fund and our Capital Outlay Fund. While we have about $108 million in the General Fund, will be around $115 million in total, with about $400,000 for special assessments, and again, those dollars are used for sewer tax assessments and usage fees for Johnson County wastewater. And then our capital outlay funding is actually set pursuant to a temporary resolution adopted by the Board once every five years, and that funding is used for capital improvements, capital projects around our campus. The next few slides are going to deal with student credit hour enrollment and our tuition and fee rates, so moving into that second source of revenue, if you will, in the General Fund. Again, this chart's very similar to the ones that we looked at for assessed valuation and mil levy. This chart also goes back 20 years, and this one tells a different story. These numbers are moving in opposite directions. If you will, during the time of, from 2008 to 2013, during the recession, when we saw those property values going down, on this chart, we see the certain credit hours going up, and we know that to be true about community college enrollment, that in times of recessions and times when unemployment rates may be high, that generally translates into more enrollment for community colleges like ours. And so, for example, if our current conditions with the COVID-19 pandemic continue to permeate and would trigger a recession, we could potentially expect to see a similar outcome, meaning that we would experience or expect to experience decreases in property valuations as a result of that, and also increased activity on our campus, increased credit hour enrollments. The next slide takes a look at our credit hour enrollment by residency status. So we, the top chart is based on, well, they're both based on our last fiscal year, fiscal year 2019, which ended on June 30th, and the lighter blue section, about 72% of our student credit hours were generated by Johnson County residents. In the green, those are residents from other counties in Kansas, that makes up the second largest component of that. From there, we have our out-of-state and international students, and then our mandatory, those bordering counties in Missouri, students from that residency round out the rest of our credit hour makeup. At the bottom of the page there is the tuition and fee revenue. So in terms of dollars, it looks a little bit different than it does in terms of credit hours because of the different tuition rates, obviously, that those folks are paying. So the Johnson County residents having a lower tuition rate, then that translates into a lower percentage of tuition and fee revenue from there. So that's just a little bit of information that we use, again, when we're building our budget models around calculating estimated tuition and fee revenues for next year, we're looking at approximately the same makeup of residency status. Our next slide, Slide 22, shows again a summary comparison of this year and next year for our planned tuition and fee rates. We've got the cost per credit hour and then also an example calculation of what a 30 credit hour load would cost. And then for comparative purposes, we have listed the respective resident and non-resident rates for University of Kansas, K-State, and also the metropolitan community colleges in Missouri. Again, just for the sake of comparison and for additional analysis. Moving into this next series of slides, these are looking at our total, again, total tuition and fees for next year. We have no change, $94 per credit hour in FY21, no change in tuition and fee versus where we're at today. However, this slide goes back again to 2008, and so wanted to illustrate there, again, from 2008 to 2013, again, during that period where we experienced the recession, you'll see that significant increase, $21 per credit hour tuition rate increase for county residents over that period of time. And so that was one of the strategies that was used by the college, again, at that time of decreasing property tax revenue as a way to make up for some of that. We did have enrollment increases, and then on top of that, we're increasing tuition and fee rates as a way to generate additional revenue. So I think that would be a strategy that we would hope to avoid, again, should the current situation trigger a recession, we would certainly hope that we wouldn't be in a similar circumstance where we'd be looking at such significant tuition rate increases for our students, and we would hope to achieve that through proper management of our reserves and our additional, our other revenue sources over the next one to two to three years. Similarly, for Kansas residents, going back to 2008, you can see the tuition and fee rates, again, $21, $22 per credit hour increase from '08 to 2013. Out-of-state and international students, those folks are obviously not property taxpayers in Johnson County. Their increases in tuition, again, from 2008 to 2013, were more significant even than those of the county residents and the other Kansas county residents. These went up by over $50 per credit hour over that time. However, in recent years, again, during the recovery, we've been able to maintain relatively flat tuition and fee rates, certainly in the last, over the last five years. The metro rate is the last chart in this section, and again, this applies to students from bordering counties in Missouri. We've had the metro rate since the fall of 2016. It was introduced at $135 per credit hour and has increased by, just once, by $3 last year, now that rate is 138, and of course, that would be the rate going forward into next year as well. So next, we have a look at our required student fees per credit hour. So again, when we're talking about $94 in total tuition and fee cost, what that actually represents is $78 in tuition and $16 in fees. As you can see here, that $16 fee total has not increased in seven years, and this money does not go into the General Fund of the college. These dollars are not used to pay salaries or keep the lights on. These are specific, these are fees for specific purposes. So for example, our student activity fee of $7 per credit hour, that's used primarily to provide scholarships and grant awards to students. It's also used to fund student life and other student activities, some athletic costs as well. Our debt reduction fee of $5 per credit hour is just that. It is used to help service principal and interest on our outstanding revenue bond debt. The parking and roads fee of $3 per credit hour is used to fund maintenance for the parking lots and the surface outer roads around our campus, and then the $1 per credit hour sustainability fee that we've had since 2010, obviously, is utilized to fund various of our sustainability initiatives at the college. So again, no planned increases there for next year. Next, we have a look at our credit course fee schedule. Again, no changes for next year, no increases here. Just a few words about this. The fees at the top of the page for our floral, the subject code is FLR, and then the hort, the horticulture, those fees are primarily in place to capture cost of materials for those programs. From there, in the middle section of the list, if you will, we've got a lot of fees for private music lessons, and so we charge those to students, and then in turn, the faculty members that are conducting those private lessons do receive additional compensation for that service. And then at the bottom of the list, the subject codes that begin with R, those relate to our railroad programs and are primarily due to the college's, or related to the college's training agreement with BNSF for those railroad courses. The next couple of pages that we have are the current year, so 2019-20 tuition and fee rates for the 19 community colleges around the state. I prefer the presentation here on Slide 31. I think it's a little easier to read. This is just a summary analysis of those, sorted low to high, and you can see in the gold that at $94 per credit hour, again, this is current year, not sure if other folks have their tuition and fee rates set for next year, but that based on the current year rates, that JCC is currently the third most affordable, lowest priced, when compared to the other community colleges around the state. From there, we have a national look at the cost of average public two-year colleges. This is published every year by the College Board. Always interesting to look at how this stacks up. This is a calculation of, again, an average price per state for 30 credit hour load. So you can see Kansas highlighted near the bottom of the page in yellow ranks among the most affordable or the lowest price on average for the published in district tuition and fee cost among public two-year colleges. And then finally, and this is the last slide I have in the revenue section, this is just a summary look at our state funding compared, again, to the other community colleges in state. Also, the technical colleges are listed on this page. This is provided by the Kansas Board of Regents. This is simply a side-by-side comparison of the FY20 funding levels, that's current year versus last year. You can see that we, for example, had an increase of about $738,000 year over year. That was due to the reinstatement of 4% cuts that were put in place back in 2017. Those were finally fully reinstated, as well as the fact that the Governor's Budget for FY20 did include some additional new funding for higher ed. So that was the net plus for everyone. I would point out that this isn't all of our funding represented in this table. We do receive about another million, $1.5 million a year in the form of vocational capital outlay grants and funding for Senate Bill 155 or the EXL and Career and Tech Ed Initiative. So now, moving into our planned expenses for next year, we have just a summary look at the total expenses by category, a budget of about $168.2 million for next year, again, in our General Fund. Primary component of the expenses is, of course, our salaries for our faculty and staff, about $89.8 million planned for next year, and again, that includes an estimated 3% compensation increase. From there, we have employee benefits, current operating, so that's going to include things like salary, or, excuse me, utilities, insurance, supplies, travel, all the things that we use every day to operate the departments around our campus. In the green section, we have our capital allocation, that's $11.9 million, and that does include the $6 million planned for science labs and $1 million for those active learning classroom improvements. And then in the gold, that sliver there, $3.6 million is debt service, again, I mentioned that earlier, in the form of principal and interest. And finally, a 10-year look at expenses, again, in the General Fund of the college. You can see, again, in terms of total dollars, the budget increasing from about $135 to $165 million over this time period. Again, we've seen increases in salary and benefit costs, but probably the most significant thing on this chart to be aware of is really the capital allocation in the last three years, as we budgeted just about $20 million from our General Fund to complete projects related to our facilities master plan. our general fund to complete projects related to our facilities master plan. And of course, we're now talking about that in terms of Phase III of that plan for next year. And again, those, those significant projects that I referred to earlier. So from there, Jason or Adrian, I would like to switch over to the other presentation, to the PowerPoint slides. Again, the rest of the book includes an awful lot of detail. It's all the departmental budgets submitted by folks around campus. It's all of the capital requests. So that information, again, is on the college's website for anyone who's interested. But I didn't really plan on, on going through any of that detail this evening. Okay, I saw the other, the other presentation popped up, but then it went away. There we go. Let me take over your screen again here. Jason, can you set that to slideshow view, please? Just, just about had it.
Sorry, folks, we're working on it.
There we go. Okay. All right. So again, just a few slides here to summarize before we move into questions and answers. Again, here are the updated revenue guidelines, which I already went over those in detail. This is going to be the same information that was included in the booklet. Next, we have some analysis around property tax revenues. So again, I talked about earlier how we found in meeting with the county appraiser staff that our assessed valuation increase was going to be a little bit higher than it, than we had initially anticipated. So when we plug that into our budget model, that's going to generate about another $747,000 in revenue. So wanted to provide, for the sake of analysis, a couple of scenarios or factors, if you will, as far as considering mill levy actions. If those were based on a 10th of a mill reduction, for example, that would reduce total revenues by 1.1 million. And then from there, if, for example, we were looking at a quarter mill action, that would be about $2.875 million in reduced revenue. So you really, in this page, want to focus on the numbers that the, in the bottom right-hand part of, of the page. And then from there, obviously, if you would, you would just simply do the math. So if you were talking about a one-mill action, you would take that 2.875 times four and you'd be looking at at least $11 million impact to the budget for next year by way of, of a mill action of that size. So this is the revenue chart, very similar to the one that was included in the book. Again, just showing our revenue by source, another look at the expenditure guidelines that were adopted in December. I've already touched on each of these. Similarly, the expenses by source for the general fund. And then finally, here, we have a summary of what the budget looks like when you're, when you put revenue over expenses. So with revenues of 164.3 and expenses of 168.2, then we would be looking at a use of reserve net of about $3.8 million if the budget were to be fully expended next year. In comparison, the budget for the current year, FY '20, called for a use of reserves of about $14.5 million. And again, just a couple of things of significance that I wanted to point out there, that the capital allocation in the current year includes $15 million for strategic master plan or facilities master plan, excuse me, projects. And then the salary and benefits line included in that $122 million with $6 million to accrue the liability for our new voluntary employee retirement benefit program. So that was a one-time accrual to get that on the books, if you will. So that is not in the $120 million of salary and benefits in the current year. So that's really what the summary budget looks like, again, for FY '21 compared to this year. So the next series of slides is hopefully going to speak to some of the questions around next year's budget that have been created in recent weeks. Unfortunately, we just don't have the certainty yet to make decisions in some of these areas based on what we know today, but wanted to start sharing some of the concerns and things that we have been discussing around the potential impact of the changing economy on the budget. So again, sticking with the general fund of the college, the primary operating fund, and starting with revenues, what are we potentially looking at? What could potentially change without really being able to quantify very much at this point? We do fully expect that, that our property tax revenue may decrease due to the number of delinquencies and appeals or decreases in assessed valuation. So specifically related to delinquencies, we use a 2% delinquency factor in the budget. And that, that decreases our, our property tax revenue by about $2 million. So if, for example, delinquencies were to double, you could take another $2 million out of our estimated total property tax revenue of 108 to do, you know, kind of a rough estimate there. Decreases in assessed valuation, I think, are going to have a longer, it's going to be a longer-term, a longer impact. Probably not so much going to see that yet in the FY '21 budget, but moving into '22 and even into '23, we may start to see some significant decreases there. And again, each 1% change in assessed valuation is going to have about a million-dollar impact on the general fund. So, for example, if we saw a 5% decrease in assessed valuation, you could again decrease that number by $5 million. Tuition and fee revenue is, of course, going to be dependent on enrollment. And again, as a reminder, every 1% of our credit hour enrollment accounts for about $300,000 out of our, our budget. So currently, in the spring semester, we've, we've seen about 117, 120 withdrawals that we believe are directly related to COVID-19. And so associated with that, we've refunded about $67,000 of tuition and fee revenue. That's already gone out the door. Now, that number will continue to increase because we have provided for folks to withdraw from spring up until May 1st. So we'll continue to see some, some reduction there. And then as far as summer, of course, it's too early to know. Summer enrollment begins next week on April 20th, and then fall enrollment will start in May. So that will be something we will just need to continue to monitor and to see if we lose students because of the uncertainty about delivery method, you know, taking courses online versus face-to-face. Or if we do start to see some increased activity at the college, folks stay closer to home and decide to come to JCC rather than to go elsewhere. So we'll continue to monitor tuition and fees and the budget estimates around that over the next couple of months. Too early to make much of an assumption, I think, there. Any potential changes to state funding are really uncertain at this time. To date, we're not aware of any planned funding changes for higher education in Kansas. And then our investment income, it will likely decrease due to low, extremely low interest rates on permitted investments. So again, as a reminder, Kansas community colleges are pretty limited by statute as far as what kind of investments we can hold. We can't go out and buy mutual funds or Apple stock or any of those sorts of things. We're primarily limited to bank CDs and government securities. All this is outlined in our investment policy and on the Treasurers Report every month. But it is likely, I think, that we will see our investment income be much lower than what is currently budgeted, which is $1 million. I would say it would not be a stretch for that to be at least half of that or potentially lower from there. So with regard to operating expenses, again, these are just some potential strategies, some things that we will continue to be mindful of as we, again, recommend moving forward with the budget as we've currently developed it, but, but realizing that, you know, as we hopefully gain certainty around our reserve and revenue levels over the coming months, these are some examples of things that we could potentially modify the scope of or defer as we're moving throughout next year. And so the first example is strategic planning and implementation, so strategic planning and implementation of those initiatives. So we had budgeted a $300,000 placeholder around that. And again, that will be very important activity next year for us, particularly as we have a new president coming onboard on July 1st. So we don't want to limit that too severely from a budget perspective, but just being mindful of the fact that that is something that we could potentially, again, modify the scope of or slow down the timing such that, you know, we don't necessarily have to spend all $300,000 of that budget amount over the next 12 months. Similarly, for the DEI implementation, budgeted at $200,000. Again, not to say that it isn't important or that we wouldn't do it, implement recommendations. It's just that those are examples of things that we could potentially modify without disruption, major disruption to other operations on campus, primarily instruction. Throughout the year, we could pull back from underspent budget lines. We have not traditionally done budget sweeps, but that's certainly something that is a common strategy. We could also just place restrictions on discretionary spending, things like travel or other non-essential items could be pulled back throughout the year. And then, again, just as a reminder, the board must approve any awards of contracts over $150,000. So while anything that you see will have already been through several levels of review and scrutiny of administrative staff and procurement staff, the board will still have the opportunity to action any contract over $150,000. So to the extent that, you know, the board had the desire to pull back on any individual item, they would be able to do so. Regarding salaries and benefits, you know, it's our recommendation currently to not modify our staffing pattern at this time. We, we would like to continue with the existing review and approval practices that we already have in place for hiring positions. So in the administrative and academic areas around campus, there's a variety of different ways people do this, that they get approval of a dean or department chair or vice president or cabinet member on replacing positions. So we would continue to do that next year, and as well as the fact that the human resources department is obviously involved in, in every hiring action that takes place. Again, rather than, than decreasing our number of positions, we would prefer to maintain flexibility for staffing in the event that our enrollment begins to increase. And I talked about that earlier. We may start to see things pick up. We may start to see slight increases in some areas, and we'd like to maintain staffing to support those operations as needed. And then finally, we would continue to use our existing positions and reallocation to meet any needs. We don't plan to, and, and the college has not added to the total number of positions in several years. Related to capital expenditures, again, these are some potential triggers, if you will, for moving throughout the next year, depending on revenues, depending on reserve levels. We would continue to desire to prioritize maintenance of the campus infrastructure over starting projects. So for example, maintaining the building exterior, things like masonry or roof repairs, we would want to continue to have the flexibility in the budget to not defer things like that. But we may need to defer projects, things that haven't started yet, or things that would be nice to have versus needs to have, like additional active learning classroom improvements, or further progress on our solar roofing, or the second set of restrooms, if you will, in our police academy, or even the space planning initiative that we had planned on keeping going. We still want to do that, and of course, that's an important part of that Phase III of our facilities master plan is creating that student hub on the first floor of GEB. So we need to move some people around to make that happen. But that is something that we could defer or modify the scope of as we're moving along. And then again, the note about the board having approval for any contracts over $150,000. I guess one other thing on this slide is there, is what's not there. And so that's the active learning classrooms. The $6 million that we have currently budgeted for those would be something that we would not want to defer if possible. We would like to continue to move forward with our commitment to improving those spaces. We discussed that project at a lot of different times with the board, at the retreat, and also at Management Committee in Trevorrowi. The dean for math and science, Dr. Mary Wiskerta, made a presentation to the Management Committee about some of the concerns with the conditions of those 40-year-old labs. And so that would be something, again, that we would like to continue to move forward with, remembering that next year, really, we would be spending that time and those, that money in a programming mode anyway. So working with faculty members, working with the architects and engineers on, on programming, and again, could make modifications to the project if we needed to do so. So finally, and this is the last bit of info that I have, is, is our remaining budget timeline. So again, no action today. Today's just for discussion purposes. We will ask the board to vote on our management budget next month at the May meeting. We need to, to do that, to pursue into the cash basis budget law, to have a budget in place so that we can conduct business at the start of our new fiscal year on July 1, so that we can pay employees and enter into contracts to procure goods and services and things of that nature. So we will be asking to move forward with that. One thing I didn't put on the slide, but that is also important, is in June, not only are we due to receive around $45 million in property tax revenue from the May 10 collection, but we will also be getting updated information from the county on assessed valuation to use for budgeting. They send that out in June. So we'll have a better idea of appeals and delinquencies, I think, already by that time. In July, of course, we'll ask the board, as we typically do, to publish the notice of public hearing for our budget for next year, for the legal budget. And then we will hold that hearing in August, which gives the public, of course, the opportunity to address the board with any questions. And then from there, we formally set the mill levy and our statutory spending limit. So again, between May and August, that, that three-month time period, we'll continue to gather information. We'll have more certainty around a lot of these things. And the legal budget can certainly be modified. It can certainly look different than the Management Committee does in May based on updated information. So again, that can certainly be modified as needed before it is adopted. So I will stop there and turn it back over to you, Trustee Muswell, for any questions or follow-ups.
Thank you, Rachel, for that thorough presentation. I want to make sure one thing's clear.
I want to make sure one thing's clear, that in August, when we adopt what you call the legal budget, that is budget authority. We don't necessarily spend that. We don't have to spend it, and we can modify line items within it. We just can't exceed that budget without going back to another public hearing. Is that right?
Yes, you're correct. That's the statutory spending limit. And we do budget transfers between categories all the time now. And then we also have a policy in place where every six months, we bring to the board through the Management Committee a report of all of our budget transfers between categories, and you probably remember seeing that. So that process would absolutely remain in place.
Okay, I'm going to ask individual trustees then to ask any questions that they have of Rachel. This first time through, I'm going to go, I'm going to start with Mr. Trustee Snyder as vice chair and go then through the officers and senior order like I've done. I think on the comments, when we get to those, I'll probably do the reverse order. So Trustee Smith, there, but I wanted to give you a heads up. You might be kind of going back to back. If somebody wishes to pass and come back, we'll certainly allow that. But the first questions, I guess, would come from Trustee Snyder.
Thank you, Rachel. My only question at this point is if we experience new enrollment, you listed the revenue impact of that. But what is the, do we have a kind of a straw man for what the expense side of that is as well with if we need to hire new instructors, et cetera?
I don't have that information. I don't know, Dr. McLeod, if you're on here, if you have any insight into something like that?
Sorry, I had to make sure that I was actually visible. So the question seems to be about the impact of postponing, or could you?
No, so the question is if we, if we get a 1% increase in students or enrollment, that's a good thing. But at what point do we hit a breaking point where we're going to have to start adding staff? In which case, you know, we then have additional expenses. And I know it's program dependent, I'm sure, but is there a general?
It is highly program dependent, but it really does start once we hit about a 3% growth during any kind of one semester. And a lot of that depends on both program and the dispersal pattern of those students, whether they are day students or evening students. We have a lot more latitude for evening students right now because those classes are more lightly attended. But if we hit about 3%, and those are primarily day students, we are already very stretched in terms of seats in courses at this point for almost all of our major transfer courses and many of our career and tech ed courses as well.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize, I was muted. Trustee Cross, you would be next.
Earlier this week, and I think something that I didn't mention in terms of budgetary options is to cut trustee salary. I think we should look into that. And then if what I hear you saying is that we have these assumptions that we're working with, one of the concerns I had earlier in the week was how can these assumptions and budget guidelines stay the same given current and recent events? But you just essentially laid it out, and as you discussed with me earlier, that we have all this uncertainty, but we don't exactly know what these variables are going to be or what and how things exactly will change. So because we have to move forward on a budget, we have to do this, correct? And I see you shaking your head, so I'm assuming that's on the right path.
Yeah.
Thank you. Then I think, you know, we talked about this, and I think I'm stealing from you and Randy, that, you know, because we are countercyclical from an economic standpoint, we have to be open, ready, and strong to deal with what will probably be a higher percentage of unemployment, economic uncertainty. So we have to do this and go forward. And then it's a good thing we had reserves and other budgetary mechanisms set up. Am I on the right path?
Yes, absolutely.
And then I think probably my last question, Mr. Chair, is what, do we know what our revenue is from the metro rate? If there's a slide on that? I missed it, but I'm always just generally curious, like what percentage of our total revenue or the tuition fees come from the metro rate, may I ask?
Yeah, Trustee Cross, it's on page 21 of your book.
Sorry.
So it's like they're about 7% of the credit hours and 9% of the tuition revenue.
I always miss it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Trustee Ingram.
Yes, I went ahead and unmuted myself a minute ago, so I would be ready for you, Chair Musel. So thank you. Rachel, one of the things, I called you about a quick question earlier today, and one of the things that you mentioned to me that I felt was really important to hear is we hear about what they're doing with the county, we hear what they're doing in the cities, and that we were different. You know, we aren't looking at furloughs right now, right now. Some of those, can you kind of go back over that little two-minute conversation that we had as far as, you know, we are different? Do you remember?
Yeah, I mean, yes, yes, I remember. No, I think we were talking along the lines of, you know, feeling fortunate that, in this case, we're not a residential campus. So we aren't necessarily in the situation that some of our other institutions are with returning millions of dollars potentially in housing or meal plan refunds, refunds of parking fees. We're also fortunate, you know, we're not dependent on things like sales tax, not a primary source of our revenue or source of our revenue at all. So there are many other things at play for a lot of other institutions that don't necessarily apply to the JCCC budget at this time. Is that what you were referring to?
It is. It is. I just found that really helpful to be reminded of. So thank you very much. And also, the fact that this is year-round planning, you mentioned that very beginning of your presentation. I think that's always a good reminder for people to hear that this is a constant that is occurring year-round. I know we have underspent this year because we canceled some things. Do we have an idea? Is that underspending, what happens to those dollars? Maybe travel that didn't occur or some things like that?
Yeah, we haven't really been able to quantify much of that yet. I mean, we're about a month into this. We have done a lot of refunds, you know, we canceled trips for folks and had some cancellation fees and things of that nature. So we do have some underspending there, but we have additional expenditures that we've incurred in areas where we've had to, you know, purchase additional supplies or technology or things like that. So I don't really have a good quantification of any of that yet, but we're certainly aware of the need to do all of that reporting out at some point.
Sure. And I apologize, it was just something that occurred to me as you were going through your presentation. So I'm sure it's something that will be, you know, addressed, but it did occur to me, so I wanted to ask about that as well. I think I am in good shape right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. We'll move to Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Chairman Musel. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Rachel and the entire team. If you heard her comment earlier, 130 departments since December working on this budget, and that's a lot of person hours going into putting together what we think are going to be our expenses and what are going to be our revenues based on assumptions, probably based on historical assumptions. And I really want to, I really don't have any questions about the presentation, but I do want to reemphasize what Trustee Cross said, and that is that we're kind of in uncharted waters here with this pandemic. And depending upon who you listen to and what sources we try to speculate, I think it's really difficult to determine when the economy will come back, to determine when assessed value, what might happen to assessed valuation and what might happen to student enrollment. But Rachel, I would like to just reinforce a couple of your slides to remind our board that the assessed valuation, if you go back to 2008, if I recall your slide properly, through about 2012, when it recovered, but it took eight years from 2008 for assessed valuation to get back to 2008 levels. And that was basically a recession when we didn't close the country down. So this whole notion of how long will it take to recover, there's but one example where it took eight years in a time that isn't like this at all. And the other thing I'd like to point out to our board to consider is that our enrollment has really been declining since 2012, and we're now at the same numbers we were in 2003. So 17 years later, we're about where we were then. So I just want to applaud the team for trying to put together an expenditure plan and a revenue plan based on assumptions that we have not had history like we have today. And I think we need to take those into consideration as we try and project what's in the best interest for our students and what's in the best interest for our college. I may have some other comments, but I'll reserve them till later. So thank you, Rachel and the team, and I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Cross. Trustee Lawson, you are up for questions.
Thank you, Trustee Musel. Is this, can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation, Rachel. This was a really good understanding and helpful for the public to see kind of where we are. Some of the questions that I have, what are the level of the reserves right now?
Sorry, I had to grab my Treasurers' Report. This is the Treasurers' Report that's in the board packet, and...
It shows February, so I wasn't sure if we have a more current one as of today, going through COVID.
Yeah, we just got March closed, and we don't have all the final numbers yet. But if you, if you look at Section 7 of the Treasurers' Report, it shows the unencumbered cash balance in each of the funds. And so in the general fund, for example, right now, or at the end of February, that number was about $98.1 million.
Okay, and then the adult continuing ed was 1.35 and student fees was $866,000. Okay, I just want to make sure that, yeah, that was, okay. And then how much money have we saved, you know, with any staff that we've had to lay off? I heard that there is no furloughs, but I also heard that we, the part-time employees or students that have been working on campus, they don't have full-time salary jobs. So those students and employees are not getting paid at this time. So do we know how much money we've saved from that?
We've paid everyone who is a regularly scheduled employee. So I wouldn't be aware of any savings, if you will. Everyone is being paid if they were regularly scheduled to work. I guess I would ask, Becky, are you, Becky Stiliver, are you available to speak to that maybe a little bit as well? Okay, I don't know if she's available or not, but does that make sense?
Well, I know that we've talked about the full-time salary, and those salaries and wages are secure. I'm wondering, there's, I've heard of a number, about 700 employees that are not regular, that are part-time, that worked on campus or students that worked, that right now, they're not experiencing a paycheck. And so when we have the state aid that is struggling to give unemployment, I just want to know, what was that money that would have been allocated for those employees? What is that dollar amount now?
Rachel, this is Becky.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I can answer that. We have all of our employees that were scheduled, and that was student employees or any other employees that were scheduled to work are being paid. I am unaware of any regular employees that are not getting paid.
Okay, so there, if this campus was working, everyone that would be working right now is getting money from, as a paycheck, even if they're not working in the field, or, so that's what you're telling me?
The only employees that are not getting paid are student, like maybe event workers, because we don't have events and they weren't scheduled to work when we've got laid off. They have not been scheduling them, so they are not getting paid. But all other employees that were scheduled, or even if they were scheduled right after the college closed, we paid them for everything they were scheduled for. An example of that would be like the summer youth camps. Right now, we're not sure if the summer youth camps are going to go on. So we're not hiring those people, and we're not going to be paying those people because we don't know that we're going to need them.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand the loss that we're having with COVID because the campus is closed. And how many employees would have been hired for events that are now closed? What is that number that we're looking at, or the summer programs that are now closed?
I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head, but we could look into that. What we'd have to do is just look back at last year to see how many people we would have employed in the summer that are not going to be employed now.
And then their salary or their rate of pay so that we can get an idea of what we would have paid out. That would be something that is really important to me, to get that information. And then because, of course, the lower-wage employees are hit the first and the hardest and probably are not getting the unemployment checks right now. So I want to make sure, how can we, you know, be spending to cover them during this time as well? So I'm concerned about just how many employees would have been hired by the college that are now not and the outcome that that has. So, but you're saying you'll be able to get that information to me?
What I could do is show you what we paid last year for those, but we would have no way of knowing what we would be doing this year. And sometimes the programs change too, so it would just be speculation.
Okay. I will move on and just, you know, give myself a little bit more time to think about that one. Going back to Rachel, so in the investments that I see in the Treasury Report, I think has a listing of investments of 1.66 return. But I also see that, you know, a lot of the government is giving away money at the same time right now, and some of these programs are, you know, 0.02% that we would have. So it's interesting, have we looked at possibly more of the governmental side where there's more opportunities with greater return when it comes to the investment?
Yes, I mean, we, the security that you're looking at at the top of the Treasurers' Report, that certificate of deposit in particular was purchased back on October 31st. So rates now aren't what they were then. But yes, to answer your question, we look at that every week when we're working through our investment analysis. You know, again, we're looking at securities pursuant to our investment policy, what is permitted for community colleges within the state to buy and to hold. And yes, we are absolutely looking at the best return to the college every week when we solicit investments for cash flow purposes.
And I see that there's about, if I'm reading this right, about $137 million that is put into different maturing amounts. It looks like some even all the way till October. So does that tie us up where we might normally have a gap that we could have flexibility when we might get delays in property tax payments? Do we have that gap anymore?
Yeah, in addition, you've got to remember too, in addition to this, we have our just operating bank accounts, which are just held at US Bank. So we may have, I don't know the dollar amount currently of what's cash in the bank, if you will, that's not tied up. Again, my, our staff looks at this every week when we're looking at cash flow. So, you know, for example, we know we need to make payroll twice a month. So, you know, for example, we know we need to make payroll twice a month. We have accounts payable obligations going out the door every week. We have construction projects. We're taking all that into account when we're looking at reinvesting securities as far as staggering the maturity date. So like you mentioned, we had, we had tried to take into account a what-if scenario, what if that May 10th property tax collection date was deferred? What would that look like for us? And that would mean, I don't believe that's going to come to pass, but if it were, that we would have to look differently, potentially at how, how far in advance or how long we would tie up, you know, dollars as far as purchasing investments that mature in 30, 60, or 90 days or what have you. So yes, that's something that we have taken into account and tried to kind of plan for.
Okay, and we're okay with that. So have and if, if and how, how much have we lost in the stock market? And like, I've heard you say that we are not allowed to get into certain things, but is there any loss that we have in our investments that are linked to the stock market?
Again, when you say stock market, I just want to be really clear that the college is not permitted to go and buy equity securities. You know, earlier I talked about examples, things like mutual funds or stock in publicly traded companies. We're not allowed to do any of that and we do not do that. So we are still making some return, but it is significantly less than it was a few months ago. In order to quantify that, I'd have to do some additional analysis.
Okay, so, but we have not lost some of our anything to some of the avenues that we are allowed to do, we haven't lost. It's more just maybe a less of an interest return, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I think that's why the statutes are, the statutes are what they are, is to preserve the principal amount of those dollars from there.
That's that Kansas MIP, that's what you're talking about. I think we had like 5 million in there or something, so, okay. And then I saw the talk about cutting the DEI budget, and of course, that was really something that was hard to take in because of the, you know, process and the investment that we put so heavy to bring in a new president with that protocol, with the RFP, things that they had to bring forward as far as a statement around DEI. So I really, it's sad to see some of these budget cuts when I see, you know, total over 100 million in reserves of that idle money and the unencumbered cash that you just mentioned. So I think, let me just look at my other questions that I have here.
Well, to clarify, I, I don't think I said that we were going to cut those budgets. What I was referring to is potentially next year, those would be examples of some things we could look at if we find ourselves in a more dire situation where our revenues have deteriorated or our reserve levels have deteriorated. Those were just examples of some things we could pull back on perhaps. There was no suggestion of cutting anything at this time.
Okay, I think I was reading, yeah, so scaling back on the planned initiatives and then it talked about the DEI and strategic planning. So I took that as cutting. You're saying those are just things that could be on the table, but those are not being proposed to cut right now? Okay.
Correct.
The clarification. And then for me, I'm, it's difficult, I think, to have, you know, when I'm looking at 100 million in reserves and, and one of the other slides in management meeting, there was, there was 11 months of no, we don't, we don't need to have income and we'd still be okay. I think for me, when I look at this budget and some of the things, I get worried about as a government entity, you know, are we being irresponsible to be taxing just to keep money? And so for me, you know, this is the time, and many other trustees have talked about this, looking at to be possibly worse than the Great Depression. And I think taxpayers and of course, students deserve that relief. When, when I look at the numbers of unemployment right now, it's pretty dire to see that we could be approaching one-third of our workforce looking to be unemployed by, I would think they say somewhere on July 1st. I think we need more students in our classroom to be building that workforce. And I think Dr. McLeod mentioned that and so did you. The concern I have is to continue to tax and keep tuition levels the same, for me feels morally bankrupting. And so that's, I, I have a lot of hesitation around seeing those continue to stay the course. And I think it'd be worthwhile to propose giving, you know, if we have 100 million in reserves, to give 30 million in tax and tuition relief. So that would be something like, two-thirds of that could go to taxpayers. So that would be 20 million, which is a two mil rollback, and then one-third towards tuition relief. That would be about 10 million. And then add the federal funds that we just got, that was 5 million, so that'd be 15 million to lower tuition. And I think that could be a way that we could also relook at our functioning, our operations to be leaner. There's a lot of inadvertent savings going on right now when the campus is not open, the utilities. There's a lot of unemployment that we would be hiring that we are not right now. But I think if, you know, we want to keep and continue to grow our Johnson County population, I look at how expensive our mill levy is and could that tax relief and tuition relief that we can offer help stimulate folks to move to Johnson County? I think the biggest reason the rural communities were struggling is because of how high their tax rates are. And then we compete with Kansas City, Missouri, and especially if you don't have kids in the K through 12 school district, the taxes in Johnson County are very high. So I think it would be something that I could like to see, is something that's more attractive for Johnson Countyans to want to live here, to, you know, make sure our property taxes are not so onerous, or else that, that we could slip into demand issues, people would want to sell their homes because the tax rates are getting too high. So. I would like, I would hope that the board can demonstrate more opportunities to give relief back for the money that we have. And I hope that as we look at this plan moving forward, we do take into consideration how difficult this time is. Instead of investing into physical new buildings, I think Rachel mentioned that too. So that's kind of where some of my thoughts are.
Trustee Lawson, I'm, I'm going to assume that was both questions and comments with your statement since you went on about 15 minutes, I didn't want to interrupt. Give another opportunity later if, if you have short comments, but I'm going to move now to Trustee Smith Everett if that's.
No, that's fine, Greg, that's fine. Trustee Musul.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have a few questions. Basically, I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of, in these unprecedented times, how and when we would do that revising that you mentioned, Rachel. So you mentioned a six-month, we, we do that anyway annually, or I guess every six months, we reevaluate our budget priorities, is that correct? You're muted.
Sorry. Actually, what I was talking about earlier is every six months, we're required to make a report to the Board of Budget Reallocation.
Oh.
That's, that's what that is, that's actually something separate. Really, the review process and the reallocation process from here would just be ongoing throughout next year as it always is.
Okay, thank you. So my question was, I know that the budget process is several months long for departments, and I know that it, it takes in multiple parties in order to get to the status on the very nice, pretty shiny book we have. So when were these numbers put in by the various departments?
Yeah, so they, they started their program review process last fall, like in October, November, and December to kind of start formulating ideas. And then the requests were actually put into the accounting system in January and the first two weeks of February. So you're right, a lot has changed since then, but that's, that's the process.
Right, that's sort of, I was, that's what I was going to get to, which is, you know, was it even a blip on our radar at the time of submitting these requests that we would even think of, the conditions that we're operating under right now? And so now that you've clarified the six-month mark, there isn't necessarily a particular time or point that we would need to go back and redo priorities or rethink those things. That is ongoing, as you mentioned, I just want to clarify that I'm getting that right?
Yeah.
So we have, for example, in the budget, a 900% increase in the strategic planning budget, because obviously there wasn't that in the past, and with a new president coming onboard and a new strategic plan, that is a large portion of, that could be relocated at any time depending on the priorities that we see fit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess I would, if it's okay with you, Chairman, I will just combine my comments then at this time, since I'm going next for, for comments.
If, if you want to wait a minute, I've got a couple of comment, questions I was saving, but you could certainly go forward if you'd like to.
That's great, I will, that concludes my questions and I will.
I'll go right back to you after my questions.
Okay.
Rachel, one of the things I wanted to ask you about was on the sheet where you showed the various mill levy options and a .1 reduction and a .25 reduction.
Yeah.
It's a sheet that looks like this for everybody. The red numbers in the lower right, those represent how much, how many revenue dollars less we would receive with those reductions than the planned 5.25%, correct?
Yes.
We're, we're, under the current budget, we will receive $5.2 million more than last year.
Yes.
And if we reduce the mill by one mil, we'll still receive about 4.1 million new dollars.
One tenth.
Sorry? If you, if you reduce it one ten. One ten? Yeah, okay. So those, those, those numbers in red aren't comparing it to the current budget, they're comparing it to the proposed budget with a 5.25% tax value increase.
Yes, that's, that's where it says comparison to FY '21 updated. I guess I, I can go back to that slide, I think I still have control of the screen. Oh, sorry. Let me go back on here. There we go. Does that answer your question?
It does, I just wanted to make sure, I thought for the public too, those, those red numbers look like we would, we would be losing money from last year if we did a reduction. In fact, we'll still be taking in 4.1 million new dollars even if we reduce the mill levy by .1.
Correct.
All other variables staying the same, which, we have lots of variables. In the, the $6 million you mentioned that we had to accrue, in otherwise, other words, out of our reserves, we have to set aside $6 million for the potential, everybody takes the voluntary employee retirement benefit, correct?
Yes.
So when we book that, that really means that the reserve number we show is really what's available to us is $6 million less than that?
No, that, that's already been taken out because the, the reserve level that we show is unencumbered cash, so it's free and clear of any liabilities and purchase orders or other commitments.
Okay. With respect to some of the strategies, we've seen other governmental entities, particularly those that are required, are reliant on sales tax, lay off significant number of folks, defer salaries. We have a 3% salary increase across the board for all faculty, staff, administrative employees. I think you estimated earlier this week, that's about $2.8 million of new spending just for the raises that we have budgeted, is that right?
Yes.
On the, the idea that we get to approve all bids over 150,000, and again, I, you and I talked about this earlier this week, I, and this may be something that Dr. Sockic wants to weigh in on, but I'm going to assume that the administration is going to look at a bid process before they even send it out, to see whether it is a priority that we should spend money on this year, or commit to over this year and next year, before it gets to us and we've gone through all the work and all the vendors have gone through their bidding process and then we would turn it down. So that, is that a fair thing that I can assume will happen?
Chair Musul, it is a fair, a fair point. I think the, the key thing here is that trustees have the prerogative to review those when they're over 150,000. Certainly to go from there, they can weigh in, and even if they wanted to, I presume, could, could stop that process from continuing. So this is just to demonstrate that trustees will still have that option as a final checkoff on those, on those bids.
That's all the questions that I have right now. Trustee Smith Everett, are you prepared for any comments?
Sure.
Thank you.
I, I guess my comments would be, just in thinking of all the unknowns that we are dealing with in this next upcoming year, for me, and, and I'll defer to the entire board, but I, I would sort of like, a little more broken out in terms of priorities that most affect students or directly affect students versus other ones that maybe don't have a direct effect. And, and the reason for that is that every decision that I'm going to make on any budget and any allocation over 150,000, my question is going to be, how does this directly affect students? So in making those decisions and having to prioritize in the next year, it makes it a little easier for me. You know, there are things like dean academic support, I'm guessing that's probably a little further away from a student than say, the science lab revision, which is a capital improvement, but it directly affects the experience of our students. So those are, that was my only comment. I'm, I'm going to be, I'm going to beat this drum about students for my term on this board, and it's really important to me in making decisions in this kind of crisis period that, that we all keep that in mind directly, you know, whatever directly affects students has to be how we make decisions. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, I, I think we all share that. Trustee Lawson, do you have a few comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know our economy is radically shifting right now, and my original budget proposal that I turned in, formulated this type of budget proposal that I had was because we had too much reserves. And now we still have too much, and our county is going through an unheard national emergency that has created what they call a virus-based economy, where people are at home, not working, accumulating expenses, there's a lot of uncertainty, they need to work. You know, and so that is concerning to me. I think it's important to provide some tax relief and tuition discount to people who are hurting right now. We have to acknowledge that our master plan that we speak about needs, we need to rethink this. And our campus may look very different and might be closed for a while. So even after COVID-19, I think there's a lot of lessons here that may teach more people to take more classes from remote, to work from home. We might have people that are more, that are traveling and that might stay closer to home in their own communities. So we are starting to see that in our own budgets. I saw the funds that were set aside for physical exterior signage, but also the digital online signage, so that's close to a million dollars that maybe we might be able to rethink the exterior signage or things like gym renovations. I think we need to be more cognizant of the unknown and look to see more avenues online, which I am starting to see that direction that staff is bringing forward. And we need to take a step back and rethink how to best meet the needs of our community, students and faculty, and we have to be working for the taxpayers and students. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Cook, trying to remember the reverse order, Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments, I'm not sure the 1% reduction in student enrollment is enough. I'd be elated if we had. I'd be elated if we had growth, but I, I think that Trustee Lawson has indicated, and all the trustees, Trustee Everett Smith, hard to predict what a student behavior will have going forward and how we learn. I think we're going to hear later in this meeting that in 14 days or so, our entire faculty really put together a terrific effort to put courses online. And, and so how the online impact will affect our enrollment on campus, at least, will be interesting. I, I think the state aid is, is really at risk. If in fact, it takes several, I think in good times, we had maybe three years it took for the economy to come back to where it was when there were setbacks. And so what's going to happen between April and September is going to be quite interesting as far as the state budget goes. We'll hear Mr. Carter's report that while March met expectations, we're not certain about April, May and going forward. So the state aid, I think, is at risk. You saw Missouri cut their education budget by, what, $150 million or $180 million? So that's, that's a factor to consider. The other factor that I think concerns me a lot is, will the virus return in the fall or winter absent a vaccine? And, and how will that impact life going forward? So I would just echo Smith Everett's comments in that I hope we make decisions in the best interest of the students. And in that regard, and I appreciate Trustee Lawson's comments about some of the work we have going forward. It makes sense to do some of this work while the campus is closed, and I would be one that would, would look at things like the Student Hub. That, that if we're, if we're expecting that that new area, like our new front door to the college, has, has impacted positively students, then, then those decisions become marketing decisions in my viewpoint of attracting students in a highly competitive nature. The science classrooms are another example that I would certainly encourage to move ahead with in the active learning, the learning classrooms. But the argument can be made that, well, is that, is that wasteful spending at this point in time? But with the campus closed, I, I think it's a prudent time. And then to anticipate, if we do get student enrollment, that those could be, those could be pluses on our campus side that would be a positive in marketing students to come to JCCC rather than another choice. So it's, those are tough decisions, and it takes a balance. I just have confidence in our, in our team that, that the right decisions were made for students. So difficult times for sure. And I appreciate the board's interest in doing what's right for students. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Ingram.
I would echo everything that Trustee Cook just mentioned. I was thinking about years ago, we used to call it smart planning. Now we call it strategic planning. I have faith in our administration and our staff and our faculty that they are doing everything that they can. These times of uncertainty are unprecedented, unprecedented as well. You know, we've talked about all the unprecedented things that are occurring, but the uncertainty is really what I have a hard time wrapping myself around. Certainly, anything that affects the students, I was really encouraged that we want to go ahead with the active learning classrooms, that we've already started with the science classrooms. You know, I think we're headed in the right direction, but I just echo that we've got the right people in place to do the decision-making. So I appreciate everything that everyone's doing right now with all of this uncertainty. And I really don't have anything to add. Certainly, anything that affects students is a priority. And I think we'll make some good decisions about how we move forward with the mill levy and the tax assessment. So that's all.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. Trustee Cross, comments on the budget?
Yes, I'm just, I'm muting my audio. I, I agree with Trustee Kirk, Smith Everett, and Trustee Ingram. I, I think that we have a duty to stay strong and ready to go. We are different than other institutions, government institutions, in that we have to be prepared for when we do reopen. Whether or not we're shut down again is also a concern of mine later in the year. But I, I, having had several conversations this week as treasurer as to what we should be doing, I'm in complete agreement and confidence with what we're doing budgetarily. And then I wanted to add that I think we all share students first. I, I think that, that is first and foremost on our minds. I'm thrilled, for instance, that we're the third most affordable option in, in the state. I think that's awesome. When I was growing up in the 80s and 90s, in early aughts, you know, JCC was known to be an affordable, no-brain alternative. Like, that's where you should go. It was so cheap. And so I think that is a strategic market advantage that we've set ourselves up for, and I commend the administration for that and this board for that. So consequently, taxes are onerous, from one of my favorite Broadway plays, 1776. You know, sir, you're complaining your taxes are too high. Well, sir, so are mine. But I don't know the alternative. What's the alternative? I mean, if we, if we don't continue down this path and plan for what we need to do to be open and strong, I, I think, you know, Dr. Cook touched on it, I, I think we may have an influx of students here. Record number of unemployment across Kansas and Missouri here has crossed the wires in the last two days. So I, I commend our administration. I'll talk all night, and I appreciate all the comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Trustee Snyder, any comments?
Just a couple of quick thoughts. So I think what I'm sensing is all of us have some, you know, anxiety of, of what the future holds for us. I, I think on, on one hand, you know, I am very hesitant to, to adopt a, a budget that basically reflects the, the status quo in a situation and a environment that, that we know is not going to be suitable for that necessarily. And then I guess one of the questions I have, or will be weighing, is whether it's better for us in May to, to try to make some adjustments toward that, or just leave that to the cabinet and Dr. Bound at the appropriate time. On one hand, I hate to approve a budget that we know is not going to be workable from the, from the get-go, but I also don't know that, that I can make a informed decision on, on what the best places to, to, to trim would be. So really, that's probably, that's really what I'm, I'm struggling with is, is how we're going to move forward. And hopefully, and I believe in May, we'll have a much clearer picture. We won't have the complete picture by any, any means. But, you know, I think next week with the, the state revenue assessment coming out, and then starting to see what, where people are with their property taxes and sales taxes and everything else, we're going to have a, you know, better information than we have today. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustees. Adrian or Rachel, could you take that slide off the screen? Thank you. This is, this is Trustee Musil again. My, my comments are really reflected what the rest of you have said. We, we know that, we pretty well know that this budget is going to be modified between now and August, probably between now and May, probably between now and July, when we even publish a budget. And we're looking for a process and a path to create budget authority so we can do what we need to do. I kidded Rachel earlier this week that I don't know what the budget problem is. The only thing we don't know about are revenues or expenses. Other than that, we're pretty well set. But it is a problem. We, we adopt a management budget in May, just so the public understands, so that we can offer contracts, particularly to our faculty, that have a deadline to offer contracts by the third Friday in May. So the, the budget start of the year at July 1, we cannot wait till the August public hearing to inform our administration and our employees of what the budget looks like for next year. I anticipate that we will have a budget item, line item on the agenda every month from now through August as the priorities might change as we get more information on expenses and more information on revenues. I'm excited about the creativity that this crisis has forced on us. Our online credit hours were over 20% before. I suspect they'll be higher. Our high school concurrent enrollment hours were over 20% of our credit hours. I don't know if they will be affected by this, but we will be looking at some different ways to teach and learn, something that Trustee Cook has been talking about for a long time. I will mention that I'm, I'm pleased that we are in such a solid financial position. Our, but our Treasurers' Report as of the end of February showed we have $98 million in reserves. I'll caution the trustees that as of the year-end, we had $48.8 million. January, we received tuition from about 20,000 students, not all of them full-time, and we received an adverbal tax payment from the state. So January is our high point. February goes down, it goes all, down all the way to June until we get our second half of the year property tax payment. So we need to make sure that at the end of the year, our reserves have enough for our emergencies, particularly because I share Trustee Cook's concern. We've seen the state of Kansas cut our budget late in the budget year. In May or June, tell us that we will be cut so much through the end of June, which we've already budgeted. So I'm nervous about that. Pleased that we have some flexibility because of our, the financial strength that we have. I think that we have a consensus that the, that the administration can take back and prepare their comments for a management budget approval in May. Dr. Sopich, do you agree with that?
Absolutely, Chair Musil. And I'd also like to add that the input across the board from all the trustees reflected really positive insight, because I'm sure we will all agree that the focus needs to be on students, and that would be a terrific filter to use as we go forward with this, with this budget. The one thing for sure, Trustee Snyder said, is that I believe we're all going to know a little bit more about what's going on by the time we have this next meeting. And it's, everything is very fluid. We're trying to achieve or maintain a high degree of flexibility with this, with this budget. So it enables us to be able to deal with whatever comes our way. So can't thank the trustees enough. They're spending so much time looking at this, and look forward to taking these ideas and going forward. So thanks, Trustee Musil.
Okay. With that, we are going to conclude the budget workshop, and we'll move into the regular agenda of the board. The agenda you have in front of you the next time will be committee reports, starting with human resources. Trustee Ingram.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report can be found on pages 1 through 4 of the board packets. We do have one recommendation this evening, which is included in that report, but I will go ahead with that report right now. Let me get to that. Human Resources Committee Zoom meeting was held at 8:00 AM on Friday, April 3. Mr. Jerry Zimmerman, manager of benefits, gave an overview and reviewed the following employee benefits consulting services recommendation to be presented to the Board of Trustees for approval at the April Board Meeting. Procurement Services issued an RFP for the college's employee benefit consulting services. Vendors were asked to respond with quotes for the upcoming 2020-2021 benefit plan year. The initial term of the contract will be from June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021. The contract is renewable for four additional years in one-year increments upon the approval of both parties. There were seven firms who responded with the proposal. After the review and evaluation process, it was determined that Holmes Murphy would be at best meet the needs of the college based upon their proposed, proposed services and fees. The fee for the services covered under this agreement are payable by Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City, a portion of which is included in the premium that the college pays for employee medical insurance as designated below. The recommendation, and I'll go ahead and read that at this time, and I would move that the Human Resources Committee recommends that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to authorize the president to negotiate a contract subject to review by college counsel for the provision of employee benefit consulting services with Holmes Murphy and Associates at a total expenditure not to exceed $62,000. And I so move.
Second?
Is there, is there a second?
Laura, second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Ingram, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Is there any discussion or are there any questions about the proposal to negotiate a contract with Holmes Murphy? Hearing none, I will ask the board to vote on that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Kathy Wing, manager, HRIA, compensation presented an overview of the 2019-2020 salary study update for non-exempt positions, hourly positions conducted by CompData. The analysis of all non-exempt positions is to ensure the JCC compensation program is competitive with the external labor market and aligned with organizational, organizational, excuse me, objectives. These studies are repeated every three years. The vendor found that our compensation program has been managed consistently, and overall, there were minimal changes recommended. Mr. Zimmerman, HR benefits manager, noted that the benefits staff has been working on implementing and communicating the relevant benefit provisions associated with the newly enacted Family's First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA, and Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, or the CARES Act. Additionally, concentrated communication effort is being directed at full-time employees as online open enrollment begins on Monday, April 13, and ends on Friday, April 24 at 5:00 PM. He noted that all full-time employees must enroll even if they do not want to make changes. The benefits department staff will be available via email and phone to answer questions, and will be able to enroll employees who don't have access to a computer. Ms. Wing has been working on the compensation steady positions, processing position audits, which is an annual process, preparing the employee list for application of the 3% raise and input for the coming year's budget, and making changes for a more electronic format for supplemental contracts using Adobe Sign. Ms. Colleen Chandler, Director of Human Resources, shared that Employee Services is still posting and advertising positions. Interview teams are still holding interviews for the most part. By using Zoom and other technologies, onboarding of selected candidates is continuing, and employee, employee verifications are still being conducted. Employee relations continues to receive, process, and investigation, investigate complaints as appropriate, handle the evaluation process, handle performance and discipline issues that are arising or have arisen prior to this development. Employee relations also continues to process unemployment claims and handle complex ADA matters. They are also providing support and resources to supervisors. The next Human Resources Committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, June 5, 2020, at 8:00 AM. And Trustee Smith Everett, I don't know if you have anything you would like to add?
I do not have anything to add. I actually have a question that I received today, and I apologize. It slipped under my nose, this, a section of this, and I was asked today about it. So if now is okay, I would like to ask about the audit for non-exempt staff.
Sure, this is a good time.
Okay, so the question was whether in, in our industry, if there's a comparison or precedent for non-exempt staff to be given credit for basically higher learning. So if they have a bachelor's degree or master's degree and could move up on a salary scale higher than where they are plugged for the position rate.
We don't pay for degrees on our staff. We do on our faculty. So the faculty schedule takes into account the degree that they hold. But for staff, if, we just look at, is a degree required for the position? And if it is, that's taken into account when they do the salary study and they do the job audits, is where it would be placed.
Right, so that's, that's why I was asking, because I wondered if industry-wide, you know, other colleges or universities, if there's a precedent for staff. And that's why, I, I understand, of course, faculty is a different ball there. But in terms of, is there precedent for giving credit for degrees earned or, or higher?
I'm not aware for staff that they would pay for degrees. I know we have a number of staff, non-exempt hourly employees that have been here that have higher degrees, but choose to have these types of jobs and probably would qualify for higher-level jobs, but they're happy where they for higher level jobs, but they're happy where they are and they haven't moved from those positions. So we don't. The faculty are the only ones that we pay actually more for the degrees.
Okay. And is, I wondered if the audit team could speak on, I think Justin's on here, did I see him earlier? I thought I saw, oh yeah, there he is. Justin, I didn't know if you could weigh in from an audit perspective, just in terms of if you even look at that kind of thing when you're doing this audit.
I will share, Justin doesn't do the audit. We actually hire a vendor outside, a compensation vendor to do those types of audits. Yes, it's not done internally.
So what do, when they're comparing, when they're doing this audit, do you know what are they comparing? Are they comparing with other universities in our region, or are they just comparing with the title, the job position?
On the non-exempt positions, they look primarily at the Kansas City market, so the greater Kansas City market for positions that are like that. And then they also do look at the Coupa HR, which is the College University Professional Association. They look at their audits and they compare like positions from them.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Ingram, does that complete your report?
That does complete my report. Thank you very much.
I might, I should have asked staff before when they, when you speak, please identify yourself with your title. I think the public probably figures out who all the trustees are. But that was Becky Saliver, who's Vice President for Human Resources. Earlier, we heard from Rachel Leers on the budget, our CFO. Dr. Mickey McLeod on the impact of, on the expense side of additional students. And we've heard from Dr. Sopcic, who is our president. But staff, if you can identify yourself as you, if you're called on to make comments, I think that would be helpful to the public. Next item is Dr. Cook on learning quality.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met on April 6 at 8:30 AM via Zoom. Trustees Cross and Smith Everett were in attendance with a plethora of staff and administrators. First item on the agenda was Maureen Fitzpatrick, who gave a report on her sabbatical leave. She took sabbatical spring 2019 semester. Her sabbatical examined the evolution, by the way, this reports on pages five through seven of your book, that she examined the evolution of new media as a distinct genre of creative writing. As part of her research, she read more than 50 books, explored multiple games, podcasts, series, I documentation, surveyed peer institutions, leading institutions in this area, and just found the landscape of digital storytelling. She created two new course offerings as a result. We discussed a little bit the challenge of hacking when you do anything on the internet, digital storytelling, and so that was, got a little bit of discussion. But really, an interesting explanation and experience for Maureen. And as we talk about what's in the best interest of students, this will enhance the opportunity that students have with digital storytelling and creative writing. Next, Gurbeshan Singh reviewed some affiliation agreements that are normal to do at this particular time. Two new renewal agreements with Medical Lodge of Gardner and Ascension Living St. Joseph Place. Denise Griffey and Diane Smithers also presented a list of renewal agreements with area school districts and KU Med Center. They also presented new cooperative agreements with the Soto School District in USC 232 for a career-ready partnership. Dr. McLeod presented facility use agreement at KU Edwards Campus and JCC. All agreements were approved by the committee, and you will find them in the consent agenda for your action. Dr. Weber updated the committee regarding ongoing efforts in student life, admissions, academic records, financial aid, athletics, and office of basic needs. JCC is adapting to innovative ways, as has been discussed, I'm sure, in each of the committees in trying to keep students informed about registration, the academic calendar. And as Rachel said previously, our summer enrollments already begin in, what, April 21st, and then next fall in May. So Dr. Weber gave us a complete update about that, also indicated that there was some discussion about the Hurstiner Childcare Center, if that would remain closed or open, and it will remain closed until JCC reopens the campus. Karen Martley updated the committee regarding ongoing efforts in continuing education. The SBDC has been flooded with requests, and I think she reported that over 500 companies have requested online service. And so there's an example of one of our departments that are very, very active online and behind the scenes. And as has been indicated previously by a variety of trustees, our small businesses are really hurting, and I'm really proud of how Karen and staff have stepped forward to have Johnstown County Community College be of great assistance to them, whether that be helping for state aid or federal aid or managing the whole operation of a small business. Dr. McLeod updated the committee on the branch-wide efforts to move all courses online. And I think Dr. Sopcic has reported earlier that within 14 days, it was phenomenal how our staff came together, those faculty that were experienced with online, helping others that had yet to take that step. And so we can all be very, very proud of the collaboration that has taken place among all employees at the college. Dr. McLeod did indicate plans are underway to complete any outstanding lab or studio work during the month of June. That's an area that gets hurt online. It's difficult, of course, to do lab work. The summer schedule has been adopted and registration, as I said, will begin on April The meeting adjourned at 9:42, and I would defer to trustees Cross or Smith Everett for additional comments.
Trustee Smith Everett, any other additional comments?
No, I did not.
Our next meeting will be May 4, and we look forward to the next week's activities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cross, did you have any comments on learning quality?
No, trustee Cook did such a good job, I don't have anything to add.
You keep changing your background, you're showing off your skills. I guess Zoom meeting doesn't mean we go fast, but now we're ready for management committee with trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. This is trustee Lawson. I raised my hand in that little column. I'm not sure if you're seeing that.
I did not see that, no.
I just had some questions for Dr. McLeod.
On learning quality?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Is he, oh, he's available. Okay, great. So obviously with, under COVID, this new learning environment for moving things online, what do you see, I know I've seen several different universities already come out and say that they are not going to have a fall season semester because the ACCT or the ACT scores, as well as the SAT scores, are not able to be taken at this point. So when I think of some of the things that we've talked about over the years with the math department and needing these scores, what do you see or things that you're working on as we work through these challenges? How do we work through the high schoolers not being able to take these tests?
Well, to begin with, we're going to allow people to enroll pending being able to get the exam. We've worked with Accuplacer as our primary testing mode, and they now have an online delivery with an online proctoring that our testing center and Dr. Weber's folks have been able to get in place and will be beginning to work with that this next week. We also have been doing work on multiple measures so that students have an opportunity to work with the faculty in English and in mathematics to be able to get their information in through other multiple measures, such as utilizing rank in class as well as GPA and last course that has been taken. So all of these pieces are in the works right now for us to be able to continue to enroll students and provide them with opportunities to matriculate.
And so what, when you start noticing the changes and the discussions that higher ed is exploring right now to make our virtual classrooms more dynamic in, you know, an adaptation to what they were in person, what are some of those conversations about that you are exploring?
We've stepped into a couple of things since we began dealing with this pandemic, one of which was an expansion of our contract with UJU, which is our lecture capture. There is also a reflex side to UJU that allows us to do digital proctoring, so professors can now proctor exams at a distance, as well as providing our regular lecture capture so that there can be playback for students. We have increased our use of technology such as the Zoom classroom and have built trainings along that, a couple of which I'll speak to as part of my part of Dr. Sopcic's report when we look at some of the moves that faculty have made to help train more deeply in some of these technologies, because we did have a lot of specialists on campus who had been early adopters of a number of these things. We have integrated more video, more individual capture, as well as activating a number of the parts within our Canvas shells that have allowed people to create individual workrooms, to split students into groups within their frameworks. So what we really have done is stepped up our use of a lot of the technologies that we already had in hand, and we've expanded the utility of many of them by expanding several of the contracts to activate portions that we did not early adopt in some of these as we slowly started to roll out some of these technologies over the past year or two.
Sorry, my dog just got, is this, do you feel that this is sustainable?
I think that we can sustain. The hard part, as was alluded to by Dr. Cook, is going to be that we have a number of pieces that cannot be fully delivered digitally. Case in point, that's a perfect example, is the work that has been done by our nursing department. All of our research has shown, and we've been allowed to utilize 50% of the time that students spend hands-on, we've been able to place those students into simulation when we have a dearth of spaces for them in hospitals and care facilities for them to get their hands-on training for nursing. Not being able to do those simulations on campus, what we have done is we've taken the video portions of older simulations and we've created online simulations, which we're doing in real time with those nursing students, to continue to allow them to get those hours towards their licensure. However, there are those places where you can only use 50% of that, and we cannot get access for those students back to our medical facilities because of the pandemic and the liability from the hospitals and not wanting to put students who are not yet licensed in danger. It has put us in a situation where we are going to be very quickly in some dire straits. Those folks, people in things like welding, our electrician coursework, the folks, even the folks who are trying to finish fine arts coursework and something specialized ceramics, when we can't bring them onto campus to utilize the facilities and to get them that time on task with the hands-on learning that they need to be successful, that is where this is unsustainable for a truly long term. We can get by in a lot of our didactic coursework, a lot of our more philosophical and academic type coursework, but where we provide credentialing for hands-on skills is a place that we will very quickly wind up in a dangerous place.
Well, thank you so much. I know a lot of your expertise and knowledge has been able to work through a lot of difficult, challenging things like this. So I believe that you have the capability to work with a lot of the accrediting bodies or the licensure bodies that, I'm sure as the time goes on, there's going to be a lot of national movement around how to make these possible, and I know that you'll be able to navigate those through as well. So thank you, Dr. McLeod.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the board's support, and I'll speak a little bit more on the work that our faculty has done shortly, but thank you very much.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're ready for trustee Cook on the management committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet on April 1, again through Zoom. Trustees Smith Everett and Snyder were in attendance, again, with a plethora of staff and administrators. Randy Weber, interim Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented information on several agreements. And by the way, this management report is found on pages eight to 19 of your packet. These agreements are with area high schools for concurrent enrollment partnerships. There were also college close-to-home agreements with several area high school districts for facility use. That information is found on pages 36 to 39 of the consent agenda in your board packet. We spent most of our time hearing a report from Rachel Leers on the budget, and we've already gone through that in the budget workshop, so I will not repeat all of that. She also did talk about all of the steps that, and the work that the finance department has done in relationship to the COVID-19 virus and how staff have adjusted to help students through this, through this time. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the single-source purchase report, and that can be found on page 10, pages 10 and 11 of your packet. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President of Campus Services, gave the monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and that report is on page 16 of your packet. He also reported on current progress of the construction projects on campus, then reviewed the report on the financial status of the facilities' master plan. We also heard reports, and he also gave a report of how his staff is dealing with the virus and protecting our workers as they, and the workforce that comes on campus to ensure that we minimize the opportunity for the virus to come to the campus with our outside contractors. Tom Pagano, Vice President of Information Services, Sandra Warner, Executive Director of Business Continuity, Chief of Police Greg Russell, Tom Clayton, Director of Insurance and Risk Management, and Kelsey Nazar, Senior Legal Counsel, also gave detailed reports of the work they're doing within their departments to deal with the virus. And all of that can probably be summed up that all of our departments are very sensitive to making sure that whoever is on campus, our workers, outside contractors, certainly are protected as best as we can from contamination virus. We have two, we have two recommendations to present this evening from bid review and recommendations. The first is a recommendation for masonry repair that we heard Rachel talk a little bit about that previously. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid with all alternates for RFB 20-044 masonry repairs for a total estimated expenditure of $155,270, and I'll make that motion.
Second, Mike Snyder.
Moved by Dr. Cook and seconded by trustee Snyder to approve the bid for masonry repairs. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
The second bid was for active learning classroom renovations, and we've had some discussion about that. And again, it's a difficult decision in times of need, but at the same time, with our, with our campus being vacated, it's also a prudent time to do the work. So it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid with alternate compressed air valve connection in OHAC, that's the Olathe Health Education Center, for RFB 20-051 active learning classroom renovations in the amount of $328,575 with an additional 10% contingency of $32,857.50 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $361,432.50, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
And moved by trustee Cook and seconded by trustee Smith Everett to approve the low bid for the active learning classroom renovations. Is there any discussion or any questions? I am trying to watch for raised hands, but please feel free to speak up if you want to say something. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
That's me, trustee Lawson opposes.
Okay. That passes six to one, with trustee Lawson voting in the negative.
My report, I would defer to trustee Smith Everett and trustee Snyder for additional comments of the management committee.
Any comments, trustee Smith Everett? No? Trustee Snyder, any comments on the management committee?
No.
Okay, I'm looking, looking at my next item, we're to President's recommendation for action, and the next item is the Treasurers Report. Trustee Cross.
Mr. Chair, I just had a question on the management. Mr. Chair, I just had a question on the management.
I see your hand now. Too many things to look at. Go ahead, Trustee Lawson.
Sorry, just had a question. So in Management Committee, they reviewed my budget proposal, and there was one question that came back to me from the community that I just wanted to get clarification on. When it talked about building the new track and reinstating the running programs that were eliminated, the answer from the staff was saying that this would be a strategic priority rather than a budget priority. So they wanted to know, what is this? Why would it be a strategic priority? I know in 2016, the budget or the track was part of the strategic priority to be moved to a different part of the campus. And then it became a budget issue, and that's why it was removed. So I'm hearing now a different turn on it. So I just kind of wanted to get some clarification for the public as to why it's strategic instead of a budgetary one now.
I'll take a shot at that first, I guess. This is Greg Mus. I, I don't think the decision in 2015 and 16 with respect to the track was a, a, a strict budget decision. All of our strategic decisions in the Facility's Master Plan obviously included a budget component, whether we redid the Student Center for a Front Door or not. I think what I saw in the Management Committee materials was both a strategic notion about whether we wanted to reinstate track and also a budget number of 2.5 million for the, or 2 million for the track and 500,000 a year for the operations. So I think, I think it's both. It would be a strategic change in the, in the priorities of the college to put it back in based on the last strategy of the Master Plan. Trustee Cook, you chaired management. Do you have anything to add?
No, I, I think that you've said it well. It did become a budget item when we talked about rebuilding the new track at another location, but I think the strategic part, and Trustee Lawson, it's a good question. But the strategic part was that, based on the recommendations of our Facility's consultant, how can we best develop pathways, clear pathways for our students? And what is the, the front door, and how can we best capture all of the student activities in one place? And so, and then we can, we can debate for hours the need to improve softball and soccer result of trying to keep our facilities comparable to what we did to the baseball field. I, I believe that at some point that discussion can, can be had, but I think at this time with where we are with the current situation and unpredictability, that it does become a strategic idea, a strategic initiative as to when and if we put cross-country and track back into our curriculum.
Okay, so that strategic plan would be more when the new president is here and we are discussing the strategic plan. That would be the discussion to come up?
Well, I think it'd be very fair for the new president to have input into that, and along with our, with our whole new staff going forward. We have some other appointments as well, so I, I just, I just believe that the strategic interpretation becomes as that part of what's important for the next steps of the college and the best interest of students, so.
And I know these are interpretations from the trustees, but is there a staff member that can fill in a little bit more?
Sure, Trustee Lawson. Strategically, originally the intent was to do fewer athletic programs, but do them to the best that we could possibly do. Do them. In other words, obviously it makes sense from a, from a budgetary perspective because now you have fewer scholarships that need to go out. You have less facilities that you have to maintain with regards to the track. You have less transportation. You have all those types of things. And there's a time when, because so much of that is covered by the student activity fee, which gets back to the point of if you wanted to raise, I don't mean you personally, but if the intent was to raise the student activity fee, then you would be doing so simply to fund athletics. So on one hand, that's a strategic component that was determined, and we went forward with that. Other programs that were eliminated were also golf and tennis along with the track. In the end, we, we definitely supported the remaining athletic programs, which was the intent with the strategy of we'll do fewer programs, but we'll do them to the best that we can. We also had the Facility's Master Plan, which then, of course, took, took that space and gave softball the same visibility as baseball. And so it all kind of came out like that.
Okay, I appreciate that, Dr. Sopjek. So it sounds like the Master Facility Plan is where, you know, the root is, and so if the track is in that, then the budget follows through that. So I appreciate the answers, and I'll bring that back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cook, or I'm sorry, Trustee Cross on the Treasurers' Report.
How about now?
You look like George Patton.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Mr. Chair, thank you. The Treasurers' Report is on page 20 of your Board Packet. The Board Packet, the Treasurers' Report for the month ended February 29th, 2020 is, here's some items of note. I had some people texting me. I apologize. Page one is the General Post Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. February was the eighth month of the college's 2019-20 fiscal year. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of February 29th, 2020 in all funds was $113.7 million, which is approximately 1.4 million higher than at the same time last year. An ad valorem tax distribution of 3.9 million was received in March and will be included in next month's report. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ended February 29th, 2020, subject to audit, and I so move.
Second by Snyder.
I apologize. I was on mute. Moved by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Snyder to approve the Treasurers' Report for Audit, subject to Audit. Are there any questions or any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We're now ready for the President's Monthly Report to the Board. Dr. Sopjek.
How about that? I'm unmuted. One of the more fascinating aspects, I think, of this whole, of this whole virus and how people are communicating, obviously us via Zoom, is that you get remarkable insights into people's living spaces. I'm sitting at, I, I'm sitting at a desk that was my father's desk as he was a clerk at the Standard Oil Refinery in Sugar Creek. And the desk is, is a, is a family heirloom. They were tearing down the building and they were getting rid of these desks, and you could buy a wooden roll-top desk for $1. Also, what makes this so special is that the legs on this desk, the very bottom of the legs that hit the floor are all beat up because my grandmother mopped floors in that office. And she beat the heck out of the legs in making sure that that mop covered every square inch of, of the floor. Also, growing up, this was in our basement, and this is where all of my two sisters and I would go underneath this desk to prepare ourselves in case we got hit by a tornado. Now, my father is in quarantine along with my mother, and he watches these meetings. I won't share his comments with you, but I will say that he will find this little anecdote incredibly amusing, and I know he'll get a good laugh out of it. And thank you for listening, for putting up with my, with my walk down memory lane. I would like to thank, before I get started, Rachel for her presentation, Dr. Weber, the entire finance staff for doing all that they've done prior to, to help navigate through the, through the budget process, which this year is extraordinarily more complex because of the environment that we all find ourselves in. I'd also like to say, as I did earlier, a special thanks to the trustees for their, for their insights and input on making this a very constructive process to date. You know, the last time we met was on March 19th. That's the Feast of St. Joseph. But it was also about four weeks ago. And I gotta say, it was really uncomfortable being in the trustee room with just trustee Musel and nobody. And that's not, that's not a dig against you, trustee Musel, but it was just, it was definitely out of our comfort zone. And I think when I say that, it's kind of what everyone's going through right now in every aspect of how we work and what we're doing, and some of the remarkable things that, that the college has, has done. You know, many individuals and teams have stepped up. I believe that Johnson County Community College has, has almost done the impossible in continuing to offer instruction for our students. If you had said that we'd have been able to convert our college into a total online college in a matter of weeks, it would have been hard to believe. But it's what we did, thanks to the incredible commitment and execution of countless people who I am so proud to call colleagues. I'd also like to thank the trustees for their patience as we did all this because it was, it was, it brought up a lot of unique challenges to us. I'd like to take you through some of the key dates in our recent history, as well as look at some that are ahead, that are looming ahead. From our, from the start, our commitment was, and continues to be, and I believe we share this with the trustees, that we will do whatever we can to ensure that our students, despite this crisis, are given the best opportunity to continue and complete their academic and professional plans with their success being foremost in our plans. A big part of getting to where we are today, credit must be given to the Incident Response Team, the IRT, that consisted of Tom Clayton, who, who you know oversees our insurance, insurance area, Elisa Pacer, who covers emergency preparedness, Sandra Warner, business continuity to, to help ensure us, to ensure that we are continuing with operations, Chris Gray over Communications, and all this was led by Dr. Weber. This group began meeting in January, discussing the potential of the pandemic and how that was going to change the way that we operated. On January 29th, Dr. Weber, in his role as Chair of the IRT, sent out the first of several communications to the campus, sharing information and websites of relevant organizations to contact regarding the coronavirus and offering tips on how we could all stay safe. We closed the campus on March 14th, the first day of spring break, and we entered into a planning and preparation mode on how we were going to remain operational. Upon announcing we were closing, we began to get calls from students, as you would expect, inquiring about how this is going to directly impact them and asking us answers regarding their future course of study. On March 25th, I alerted the Board that we, and ultimately I, was going to utilize the Emergency Operations Plan, which enables the college to implement emergency operations, both during and immediately after a major emergency crisis to ensure life safety, stabilization, and property preservation. This plan was first adopted and sent to the Board in 2015. It is updated every two years with the current plan dated June 15th, 2019. The plan has been discussed with the Board in various exec, various executive sessions related to safety and security since, since its adoption. It's one of those things that you hope you never have to use, and quite frankly, you never expect to. But in this case, because of the coronavirus, became a very important document. Pursuant to the Infectious Disease Policy, which is 611, emergency operations, including the plan, were initiated. And pursuant to the plan, the Executive Policy Group, as it states, "may issue an official emergency policy statements, orders, or notices to support the colleges' emergency response and recovery operation and provide direction and vision to the college for the recovery of its programs, as well as post-event plans for restoration." This was implemented in the attempt to be able to respond to those students who had, who had so many questions regarding their own course of study. So three policy revisions came forward on this. The first was about the enrollment policy. And the way it stated was currently students with past due obligations to the college could not enroll in courses until such obligations are resolved. We changed that, and in fact, we lifted that to benefit those students who might be in challenged times economically. So a temporary emergency allowance was enacted that enabled students who owe money to be able to enroll for summer slash fall during this time. The other policy was about scheduling of courses, the add slash drop policy. Currently, it reads that students must drop credit courses by November 15th for the fall semester and April 15th, spring semester. April 15th was a couple days ago. We moved that drop date to May 1st. To date, I believe that maybe we've lost only 80 students due to the changes that we've had to make. Now, out of 15,000 and something, that's a pretty good deal, right? The, and I just want to forewarn the trustees that the next time you see an enrollment report, we may have a higher number of drops because it will be after that May 1st deadline that was extended. But it certainly has given students a little bit longer period of time before they make that decision on whether or not to drop. And with regards to the grading system policy, we allowed students to take multiple classes pass/fail for the 2020 spring semester. Originally, they could only take one. So these three policies were enacted with the hope that it would, I guess, you know, facilitate students making their challenges a little bit easier to carry as they tried to finish the semester. If there are questions from the Board on this, we're more than welcome to entertain those after this, after this report. I want to thank the staff, but especially the Board, for understanding why we had to take that action and to do it so quickly. Another topic I wanted to discuss today was the report being sent to the Higher Learning Commission. On the President's Report, or the Monthly Report to the Board, you'll see that there, on the first page, there's a statement of philosophy on that. And by the way, that report's pretty spectacular. I wasn't sure exactly how much input we'd get. We had around 44 pages, if you want to look at it that way, of input from programs across the college of some of the incredible things that are happening despite, despite dealing with the coronavirus. I'd like to thank, before I even say word about this, the Institutional Shared Governance Task Force and Academic Shared Governance Task Force for doing a terrible amount of heavy lifting in this regard. And of course, you've heard us saying Sherry Barrett and John Clayton repeatedly, but those task force, forces were everything with respect to trying to put this together. As the Board is aware, the Higher Learning Commission gave us that May 1st deadline to submit to them a report that addresses our efforts to implement a shared governance process on our campus. At the most recent retreat, that statement of philosophy was presented to the Board. The statement was the first step toward issuing this report to the HLC, the one that's due on May 1st. On April 3rd, which was a Friday, we posted the report, which I believe is in the neighborhood of seven pages, on our website, and then on April 6th, which was Monday, we sent out a notice to the campus on Info Hub, directing people to that website and invited responses. To date, we've received two responses. And one, very thankfully, addressed a typo that was in the report, and the other was, was very substantive and much appreciated. This full report is available online and can be reviewed anytime. Rest assured that the HLC will have this in their hands by May 1st. I cannot stress enough that this pursuit of shared governance will be an evolutionary process. Approaches will be implemented, tried, and revised over time. The goal is to achieve a process that people believe in and one that works. And I would expect that the Board will be apprised of the college's progress in this area as it goes on over the upcoming years. Quick word about enrollment. You get the, receive their report, the enrollment report like everyone else does. You'll notice that at the time they, they did this, we were down in the You'll notice that at the time they did this, we were down in the headcount, 184 students, which is 1.1% versus a year ago, and our credit hours were down a half a percent, which was 648 credit hours. Again, be aware that as of May 1st, which is the last day for drop, when students can drop, those numbers will potentially change, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Recently, the foundation sent out a very, a great update to its members about the college. Within that update, Dr. Melanie Harvey was featured and did a terrific job of sharing the faculty's perspective on what the college is going through during this age of the coronavirus. With there being no liaison reports, we wanted to share with you her insights on how faculty is handling instruction while dealing with the challenges that come with this virus. So if you can roll that video, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Melanie Harvey, and I'm president of the Johnson County Community College Faculty Association. I wanted to give you all a quick update on what the faculty have been up to. Well, obviously, things drastically changed for us, and the campus is closed, and everybody is teaching remotely. There are some courses that we're not able to really convert to that format, but most of our classes have found ways to do that. And it is really challenging because our students didn't sign up for this kind of learning. Many of our faculty did not sign up for this kind of teaching. I think it's one thing to teach a class where they plan to be online, or even hybrids are not as bad to convert, but when you have a class that planned to be in-person learning, it's really difficult to convert it to remote learning. It's just not the same. And I think adjusting expectations has been one of the most challenging parts. We've had a lot of resources from the college, from staff, support in educational technology and IT and faculty development, helping faculty with the resources they need to learn how to use the technology that they've not used before. Everyone's becoming really good at using Zoom, of course, and this goes for everybody, it seems, in the world. Zoom has been really helpful. In fact, our Canvas, which is our learning platform, Canvas, our Canvas shelves for our courses have a Zoom tab now, and you can schedule regular Zoom sessions. And you can also go to that tab to access recordings of those Zoom sessions. So for example, many of my students are working strange hours, they have kids that they're watching, some of them are working different jobs than they had before, and their lives are a bit hectic. So they're not necessarily able to come to a session. So if they're not able to, they can go and watch the recording of the questions of their peers are asking during, during, you know, virtual class. So that's been very helpful. We're adapting, and we're trying to be as flexible as possible. One of my classes, I have three students that are working at KU Medical Center, and they're RNs, and they are working in ICUs. One of them's on a COVID-19-only floor, but all of these students are dealing with the changes and the stress of the front lines. So making it a little more self-paced than I usually would, so that they can work ahead and get things done in case things get worse here, or in case they have a period of extra work and stress and they're not able to keep up. So I'm just kind of trying to be as flexible as possible, and I think everyone is doing that. We're asking students how they are, we're asking them to share with us their struggles and concerns, and they are in such unusual places in society that they're able to keep us informed in ways that we're learning from them. The other thing we did before campus closed is we gave away as much protective equipment as we had. So for example, in science, we gave away all of our gloves from Facebook, a post of gloves delivered and some masks that we found in science to a doctor's office. I filled my Prius with a lot of boxes of gloves and delivered those to two places. I split them between the Olathe Health System and the Overland Park Regional. So we distributed as much as we could. You see on Facebook, our campus photographer has shared a number of photos of our healthcare areas, sharing things that they have, such as gowns. Our respiratory therapy program has loaned out ventilators to KU. They have, I believe, nine of them on loan that they are going to use if they need them. My student told me Friday that they had not used them yet, but they're keeping them on reserve. And also, our food services were able to donate a lot of food that they had to those that need it most. So you can see our community is pulling together before we had to leave our campus to share anything that we had that might be useful to people that are on the front lines. So that's what we've been doing, and we're continuing forward, planning for online summer classes, and at least in science, everything's online. And we're hopeful that we can get things going, and this, our world gets a little better, a little safer, we can get a handle on this pandemic, so that we can return to something normal sooner rather than later. I hope you all stay well, and thank you so much for your support and everything you do for our students.
Are we ready to go, trustee Musial?
Go for it, we're still on.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Harvey. That was a terrific report. It really reflected all the, the way the faculty has responded to this, not only in the classroom, but in the community. It's something that makes us all very proud. Dr. McLeod, I'm going to ask you to provide a little update on where we stand. I know trustee Lawson already touched on that.
I was just going to ask that.
Yes, I'm here. All right. So to kind of take over a little bit from where Dr. Harvey left off, we've had some moments of what I would consider to be heroics by a number of our faculty members, beginning with most of the science department going to some lengths that were unlooked for at the beginning of this process. We have had most of the science departments coming together, both our hard sciences and our life sciences have gotten together to completely design entirely new labs that could be delivered in an online fashion. This took place over the course of about 14 days of tireless work. Pretty much every day, this group of faculty worked together to figure out how to put together both pieces that would be mailed out to students who were part of the classes, as well as how to redesign their lectures and the approach that they take normally in the lab to make sure that students could actually perform a number of these lab experiments in their home and continue with their education. Dr. Valerie Mann over in the AAC has been instrumental in putting together a number of trainings, and her and her folks in the academic learning centers have really worked hard to make sure that they were able to post a number of courses, both live hosted through Zoom, as well as trainings that they worked with Ed Lovett and the folks in the Educational Technology Center in posting, to completely train up faculty in how to use the tools that we have available online, including some of our newer tools, which Mr. Lovett and the staff and Ed Tech had already started building trainings for. So those folks have made it possible for an entirely new, you know, online generation, so to speak, of faculty to be capable of doing the things that we have done for our students over the last month and more. You have to keep in mind that a number of our faculty have taught primarily face-to-face courses, and so their utility online was very, very limited to just posting a few things here and there and keeping grade books active and updated for students to be able to know where they stand. So really being able to learn some of this newer technology, particularly something like UJ, which literally we had just closed the book on that contract and started actually having courses on in January. And so it's a completely new technology to most of the faculty not too long ago, and they have been doing yeoman's work of pulling those pieces together. The chairs of all of the departments have been meeting regularly via Zoom to make sure that they are keeping folks apprised of what is going on within the branch, as well as making sure that they are staying connected with their adjuncts to help them get what training they need, what access or assistance that they need. We had a huge amount of help from IS and Tom Pagano and his group as they helped deploy laptops from our carts that we normally use for students, to make sure that even our adjunct faculty had what they needed to continue to teach online as we moved forward in this paradigm that none of us expected. We have had just a great synergy of all of our people at the college. It has been gratifying in this moment to kind of be a cavalier, to see these folks come together to really drive forward the mission of this institution, and to make sure that we are doing our best to continue to deliver top-notch education to students at a distance, and to make sure that we plan effectively for finishing out and completing those students who cannot complete their work at a distance at the very earliest possible time. That planning continues to be underway as we look at options for the summer and recognizing as this pandemic continues to advance that maybe those plans will have to be moved to a Plan B, so we can start looking at late summer and fall. It has been an incredible amount of work, and for me, I have been in awe of the folks that we have at this campus, who have been capable of such a heavy lift in such short order, and with the degree of grace that they have managed to bring to this process.
That's great. Thank you, Mickey. A few final comments here. The first, I wanted, I would like to recognize the life of a former colleague, Mr. Bob Prater. Bob worked here, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 years, and I feel horrible, I don't have the exact number of years. He was an incredible contributor in our business services area, our financial practices. Oh, and he's also a Vietnam veteran and photographer. And one of the more remarkable photos that he had in his office was him in Vietnam, in a tent with some of his fellow soldiers playing cards. Never forget that. Bob established so many of our practices and really established the standards that our financial area, that we all benefit from today. It's why our bond rating is excellent, and it is why outside auditors seldom if ever find, make finding of our practices. It's why we got a 10-year reaccreditation with the HLC. Bob always personified one of our greatest challenges is living up to the, living up to the accomplishments and the reputation of the past. He'll always be missed, he had a wonderful sense of humor, and I just wanted to take the time to recognize him at this meeting. A couple other quick points. We had 102 participants on this at the high. I recall 102 participants sitting in the trustee room for a budget workshop. That's pretty remarkable, and that's a real compliment to the board and to the entire college for providing that opportunity. I would also like to thank trustee Cross for putting up a shot of this football stadium of my alma mater, if I was informed by a colleague. Thank you for doing that, Lee, as many backdrops, very much appreciated. But the real issue here is what's ahead, is what's ahead. And no one, not even Dr. Fauci, can tell us what to expect in the months and even the years ahead. We know we're going to be challenged in so many different ways, more so than ever before. And yet, as Dr. McLeod said, it's been amazing to see everyone step up. The successes of where staff and faculty have distinguished themselves beyond what we ever could have thought possible has been truly inspirational. We have gone, I believe, we have gone beyond our mission to inspire learning and transform individuals and strengthen our community. We've done all of that. Dr. Harvey's mention of distributing medical supplies to the health community is truly remarkable. You know, in this moment of a national crisis, we as an organization, I believe, have demonstrated what higher ed is all about here at Johnson County Community College. It's about caring, it's about compassion, it's about doing whatever we can do to give our students every opportunity to succeed, and I have never been prouder to be a part of this institution. Trustee Musial, that wraps up my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sobchak. Well said. Trustees, we are coming up on the three-hour mark of this, and we can't take a break like we normally do in a meeting, but I would, if anybody had a quick question for Dr. Sobchak or the cabinet with respect to his report, trustee Snyder, anything?
No.
Trustee Cross? Okay, trustee Ingram, I can see you shaking your head usually. Trustee Cook?
No questions. Great report, and again, compliment all the staff for the hard work they do in difficult times. Thank you.
Trustee Lawson? Trustee Lawson? About trustee Smith Everett?
Yes, chairman, I apologize. I know this is a long meeting, but I do have a few comments and questions.
Sorry.
Dr. Sobchak, I will email these to you and your team. I've just kind of had a running list. You know, and part of this is just my own experience in K-12. We've sort of gotten over the hurdle of the first wave of, wow, we've got to, you know, build a ship in the middle of the air, or build a ship in the middle of the sea, you know. This has, this has been tremendous, but I want to just commend your team and the amazing faculty administration, the cooperation, the absolutely phenomenal job getting, turning this place from a physical place to a virtual place. But turning our lens towards equity is a really important priority for me, and I wanted to ask some questions. And again, I can email these, but I just wanted for the public to know, these are some of the questions that I'm going to ask.
Sure.
So, you know, we've extended that deadline to May 1st for dropping classes, but do we have, are we monitoring or tracking students that aren't logging in at all for Canvas? And I'll tell you why I'm asking that. In my experience, what I've had, and the students that I serve in my district are sort of the unreachable students. And what has occurred to us as we've sought out different methods to get a hold of them is that they thought just everything was shutting down, and so they didn't know that school was still going on. I actually had a friend of mine, someone I used to work with, whose own adult child is a JCCC student, he didn't know the classes were online. He just, he just hasn't been participating, and he was, you know, he's a non-traditional student, and he, nothing was on Canvas before much for him, and so he hadn't been checking. That's kind of one of my questions. How are, you know, now that we've gotten into our next phase of doing this, how are we monitoring who is not really aware of these changes?
And trustee Smith Everett, that's a great question. Thank you for asking it. I'm going to get some input here. Dr. McLeod, could you kind of weigh in on this? Because this, this is a real issue when you go to an all-online, you know, approach to this, and so I think it's a fantastic opportunity to have this discussion. So thank you. Mickey?
Yes, this is one of the actual things that is interesting about our online system. Within Canvas, we can actually run reports that actually catalog who has not logged in for their coursework, and an instructor can actually check that because we can look down to the minute of where a person has logged in and what they were logged into. So we're able to keep track and try to reach out in other ways to a student who has not been a part of the course, who was a part of the course but then has not logged into anything. We've also extended all of the deadlines for not just drop, but also the way that we have worked the deadlines around assignments, in the hope that we can recapture students who have fallen away or lost access in some way, so that they are not penalized, kind of unduly, for not being able to get things up and running. So that flexibility has been built in by a number of the faculty members in their approach to due dates, to assignments, to the way in which we've structured and assigned testing periods and times. So those pieces are things that we continue to work with, but we are tracking where we have lost people along the way and trying have lost people along the way and trying to find ways to reach out to them if we cannot get them through, you know, the COVID-19 website for the college, or they're not responding to emails, or those sorts of things. So those are things that we knew going in would be issues that we would have to deal with, where once the campus closed, some folks who almost only get their information directly, you know, an anecdote to something like that was I was in the accounting meeting just yesterday morning, and there was an anecdote from the department chair who was running the meeting, that there was a student who actually finally came back in and said, well, I had no idea these assignments were due. I never paid attention to the syllabus. I always got those answers from you by listening to you when you said this is going to be due next class. So I didn't keep up with anything. So she had a chance to have to stop and instruct him on how to actually go back and read the syllabus to be able to know when things were due, because his entire conduit for getting information on when and how the class worked was literally listening to her in lecture. So these are things that we have thought about, and we are working through them.
So, you know, in follow-up to that, how is this being communicated with faculty? Because I'm sure faculty are now realizing those students that they're not hearing from, they haven't gotten contact with, and are they clear on how this will start to work that we're reaching the unreachable?
Yes. Most faculty are getting this information. I work with IDC. The deans and I have been meeting twice a week since the beginning of this, and then they have been having meetings with each of their departments as we've continued on. So we're continuing to filter the information down through the branch, through our normal channels. So, but everything is kind of running on double time, whereas we would normally have a department meeting once a month. These things have been happening weekly to make sure that we're keeping people abreast of, because it's such a fluid and changing situation, we can't be out of contact with anybody at this point. So we're trying to make sure that we're keeping everyone abreast of how these things work. And then as questions and issues arise, we're keeping the conduits open for faculty to reach out to deans, to chairs. A few have reached out directly to me, particularly at the beginning of this, for answers to questions. So I've connected them, both with policy answers as well as direct answers, and connected them with deans and other people who would be their more day-to-day contacts to try to make sure that we're keeping everybody kind of moving forward at the same pace.
Thank you for that. Again, I will send, I will send email on the rest of this, and I'll just kind of give you my list. But labs, obviously, you've spoken about that tonight, you know, the lab situation, and I'm sure tied with different program certifications and accreditation that are required for those certifications. But one of the things that we've realized in K-12 is sometimes we've rolled out PD, and I've received PD, but you actually learn a lot more from your own colleagues who are figuring out workarounds and are coming up with really incredibly creative solutions to that. And I wondered if you all are considering ways in which your, you know, inner department, as well as division to division, can communicate on how labs, you know, because science has labs, but also culinary has labs, and how you, how we can take the most creative approach with what we already have instead of reinventing the wheel for doing labs and having a new system to learn and log into to do it, and all those things that are just so cumbersome in this, in this world. So there's that. And then, I'm reading my list. I apologize. Will we, in the May meeting, have, I know, Dr. Sobchak, you mentioned this, but just the, how many students the, have dropped, you mentioned you will provide in May, we'll kind of have a better understanding. But I also wondered if we'll then start to set forth an understanding of how many students will have, will be appealing. Let's say they didn't make that May 1st. You're going to have a second wave of people like, oh, well, I didn't know about it, and they're going to have to appeal. And if we'll sort of have a sense of that, you'll be presenting that to us. I just, it gives me ballpark and a sort of an understanding of what.
Absolutely. And I was going to ask, Dr. Weber, if you can, can you weigh in on that one, since all those appeals, you deal with so much of those things?
Yeah, real quick. We've had thus far, 100, as of 5:00 yesterday, 130 students withdraw with COVID-19-related incidents, and we've paid tuition and first-day book access in excess of $68,000. So we're tracking that very closely.
Thank you. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chair.
And if I could add on that, Trustee Smith Everett, I think, as you know, if we lose them, we may never get them back.
Right. That's my biggest concern, is they, when, once we've lost them, it's not just, you know, this, they may never return and not be able to finish their educational path, and that's my biggest concern.
And that's certainly not in their best interests, so for bringing that up.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. Trustee Lawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, everyone, I've had some technical difficulty, but I'm on my mobile now. I just wanted to make a comment. No questions. Dr. Sobchak, your report every month is really my favorite part of the board packet. It, of course, is, as everyone reads it, very rich and inspiring to see the dedication of so many faculty and staff and students, especially during these uncertain times as we work through this. This one is 47 pages, but I know there have been reports that are much longer than that, and I think to document everything to this degree is truly incredible and a testimony to your commitment to the students, the faculty and the staff, so they can shine as well. I appreciate the video that you brought forward from the faculty. It was good to hear from them. And one part that I really enjoyed reading about was the discussion about the librarians. Jessica Tipman, Jan Brooks, and Mark Swalls. And I know you could probably explain and highlight a lot better than I can in your description, and if there's anything more that you can speak on about those. And what the librarians have been doing is an enormous amount of heavy lifting to make sure the video chat supports and the faculty supports are there for the students in their classrooms. And I don't know if you have anything else to add on that, but I just wanted to give a shout out to those three librarians.
Thank you for pointing that out. I think it's a lot of fun following them on Twitter because everybody posted on the developments over there. So it's a very special crew. Thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you.
When you follow the librarians, you have to turn your volume down, though.
What is this Twitter handle? I need to know it. I don't, I'm not following them. This is essential new trustee information I did not receive.
I'll bet somebody can send that out to the board.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, Dr. Sobchak, and Mickey, and Randy, and everybody on the cabinet, thank you. It's been a all-hands-on-deck effort, and I don't think anybody that wasn't on the inside will ever appreciate exactly what you all have accomplished. Everybody from the custodians to the top have contributed to demonstrate how powerful and practical and passionate we can be when we're partners, to use a little alliteration. So I really appreciate that. I want to acknowledge the fact that the HLC report will be delivered by May 1, which is the HLC requested deadline. We reviewed it at the March retreat, the first Saturday in March. It's been posted on the website, and response or input and responses have been requested. So we appreciate the fact that everybody on campus worked together on that as well, and that we will have something to the HLC that will address the shared government, the governance needs of the college going forward. So thank you for your report and everybody else for chiming in. The next item on the agenda is new business. And under new business, we have the Facilities Naming Committee with respect to the Carlson Center. It was requested that this be placed on the agenda. I wanted to update all trustees because we don't come across naming of buildings or un-naming of buildings often. As a college and a board, we've adopted a, the Naming College Facilities Policy 217.05, and the Naming College Facilities Operating Procedure 217.05. The policy covers approving, changing, or removing the name of a college facility. An affirmative vote of five trustees is required for any of those actions. Recommendations for the naming of facilities are to be made in accordance with that policy and procedure. Excuse me, Procedure 217.05 identifies a facilities naming committee that is to be appointed to evaluate the naming nomination. The facilities naming committee is to consist of two members of the Board of Trustees, two members or directors of the Foundation Board, one member of the Faculty Association, one member of the Student Senate, one administrative employee, and any other appointees deemed appropriate by the President. Dr. Sobchak and I intend to appoint a facilities naming committee to perform the tasks set forth in the policy and procedure with respect to the request to remove the name from the Carlson Center. The naming, facilities naming committee would then report back to the board, which again, would have to take action by the vote of five members to change. I wanted to report, I've been in communication with Samantha Jocelyn, who is the editor of the Campus Ledger, and I've assured her, and I want to make sure to, make certain to assure the public, there will be opportunity for public input on this, for anybody who wants to make that input before I place it back on the agenda for any kind of action by vote. So that is the reason for that being on the new business section of the agenda, is to explain the policy and procedure we have in place, and that that procedure has now been initiated and will be. The next step will be the appointment to the facilities naming committee. Are there any questions?
I would just like to make a comment. I would like to thank you and Dr. Sobchak and commend you for starting that process. I think that will go a long way in healing some of the issues that we've become apprised of. So thank you both very much for your leadership on doing that.
I see no other hands raised.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to make a comment.
Sure.
I appreciate your willingness to move on this, and I'm very grateful for Dr. Sobchak and you to initiate this process and to make sure that the students and the public are a part of that. Thank you so much.
Okay. The next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda normally includes a number of routine items and consensus items that are typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may ask that an item on the consent agenda be removed and considered separately. I have been approached by trustee Cross to remove item number two, paragraph two of the Human Resources Report, not the addendum, but the report. So I will remove that on my own based on trustee Cross's request. Is there any other item on the consent agenda that any trustee wishes to remove? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda absent item two of the Human Resources Report?
Trustee Cook, so moved.
Is there a second?
Trustee Ingram, I'll second.
Trustee Cook moves, and trustee Ingram seconds. Approval of the consent agenda except for paragraph number two of the Human Resources Report. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. That motion passes unanimously. Trustee Cross, I understand you are going to move to continue item, paragraph two, to our May meeting. Is that correct? Yeah.
It was your idea, and at your recommendation, yes, I concurred. I just want to give credit of credit to, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Laura Smith Everett.
Moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Smith Everett to continue item number two of the Human Resources Report to the May meeting, where we will probably list that under old business.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
This is trustee Lawson. I just have a question. So number two, is that action going to happen, or that is getting postponed? Just a clarification.
The action notice has been provided to the employee. The employees, as I mentioned earlier, as I understand it, renewal contract would have to be offered by May 15th. Our board meeting is on May 14th, so it is basically in a holding pattern pending the board's consideration on May 14th.
Okay. Is that enough time for turnaround, so that if this goes in a different direction, will she be, you know, will that action happen, or is that enough time? That's really what I'm looking for.
I'm comfortable that staff believes that's enough time. They're aware of the two ways it can go.
Okay, thank you.
There are no other items of business on the agenda. I wanted to handle a couple items before we ask for most for adjournment. The first thing is that on the May agenda, I plan to put under new business a, the naming of a, I guess we would call it a transition liaison committee from the trustees to work with Dr. Bound, our incoming president, and I intend to appoint trustee Cook and trustee Smith Everett to that liaison committee. I also intend to create a self-assessment, self-evaluation committee to look into evaluations of ourselves as a board, which is something trustee Cook started a couple years ago. It's considered a best practice by ACCT, and we did it one year. But trustee Ingram and trustee Cross would be in charge of bringing back some ideas and proposals to the board. That would also be listed as a new business item next month. The board policies allow the board to create special or ad hoc committees, which is what I would consider those two efforts. I wanted to give notice now, so when they showed up on the agenda in May, nobody was surprised by those. The final item I want to address is an apology to trustee Lawson. On February 8, 2020, I posted a comment on the Facebook page of Angelina Lawson, JCC Board of Trustees. It stated that Angelina Lawson had voted against a reduction of the JCC property tax mill levy twice in 2018 and 2019. Although I believed that to be a true statement at the time, I later learned and now know it was incorrect. Trustee Lawson voted for the mill levy correction or reduction in 2018 and against it in 2019, the only year. I regret my mistake, and I sincerely apologize to trustee Lawson for that mistake.
Mr. Chair, I accept your apology. Thank you so much for recognizing that. I think that's an opportunity for us to move forward, and I look forward in doing that with you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I see Dr. Cook moving to the mic. You want to second? Moved by trustee Ingram, seconded by trustee Smith Everett. We are at 3 hours and 9 minutes. I don't think we should call this Zoom anymore. We should come up with another name, like plotting, maybe, or something. Thank everybody for the patience as we work with the new technology. It cannot be as efficient as being in the same room. I am worried that we will not be in the same room in May. I hope we make it by June. Thank you all. See, I bet, we better have a vote on that. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion is carried, and we adjourn. Thank you all very much. Stay safe.